Yes, the Latin College will statement. Tallahassee High School District serves 14,000 students with 15 indigenous communities represented throughout our seven high schools. Tallahassee High School District Governor's Board, the Knights of College, and traditional associates in this land. Dr. Noel Upman Pima, P'Pawsh, their Hoco peoples, with their respect to their elders past, present, and emerging, and recognize their endurance and connection to this land, the rich culture and language, and the valuable contributions they have made and continue to make in our community. So as we gather today in this Tallahassee High School District work-study session, let us remember the significance of this land, the legacy of the original students of this territory.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to our first discussion. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Kynes, Senator Lee, and Mr. Smith, who are working on high school number eight.
Yes, President Chapman, members of the board. So we have DLR and Chase Building here to present tonight on high school number eight. So I'm at, I think, wherever they leave us tonight, so I'll turn it over. Do you have a mic? Do you have that one?
I got a mic here, see if we can hear you. Yeah, I got a fancy walk one, so it gives me a little bit of a kind of walk around. So hello, good evening all. I'm so excited to be here. So today I am joined by Jason Lemke, who's one of our National Designers, Cameron Walberg, as well as one of our other sort of designers. We've got our Chase team partners here, so Tim Goye, Connor DeWes, Joe Cocon, and Mr. Barry Chase there. And I am, you know, two weeks ago, you asked us to present to you all with a sign option that removes or moves the gym over to the west-hand side of the site. So we thought that the way to best facilitate that is we have printouts here of the site. And then as well, we have a virtual whiteboard that we can walk you through. So this is clear board, and this is just a fancy way for us designers to kind of really just look at the overall sort of design progress and process. And to facilitate that, I would like to maybe start with, if you want to pan Cam to the edge of the start. So when we met and we talked about the site plan with high school number eight two weeks ago, again, we went back and we took your feedback and suggestions of moving the gym to the west-hand side of the site. Of course, it, you know, we want to talk a little bit about the process of how we got there, how we got to where we are right now. And so what we're seeing here on the screen is essentially, very early on in the stages, when we received the site, we go through a general design process of being able to understand opportunities, challenges, and through that, we give ourselves specific design criteria that is specific to the architecture, to support athletics, and even the site itself. So as you see here, we've gone through multiple iterations, and this was at the beginning of the project. Through this exploration, we came up with two design concepts. So those two design concepts were presented to you in a special study session a couple of months ago. And then at study session, we explored the River Nexus concept. You also got the opportunity to select two site concepts. The board elected to choose the north concept. And so with that, what we did is we took that north concept, and we have been working with the City of Abendale, our engineers, we've been working with our design team to really sort of understand the overall site opportunities, challenges, overall traffic, pedestrian circulation, so that we can validate where we place the elements around the site. So we took the concept that the district preferred, and what you saw two weeks ago was the latest iteration. So Cam, if you want to pan maybe to the, do we have an option down south, or you can show what we saw two weeks? Thank you, Cam. So this is the site plan that you saw two weeks ago, and we understand that the board at that time had elected to actually remove the indoor fieldhouse and to move the gym to the west-hand side. And so I just want to bring it up so that we can kind of show where we were at. Now we've taken that, and you'll see the latest site plan that we have here today. Moves the PE building to the site. The fieldhouse is now just a regular turf competition field, football field. We still have to the west, overall home grandstands, and then to the east, we still have visitor grandstand seating. We moved through, we still have the Performing Arts Center, and then to the further east of the site, we have the Core Academic Building. We kept the main pickup and drop-off for the parents off of 128th Street, that's still looped down south and up and around through access to the upper academic space. Thank you, Cam, for highlighting that. We also still kept the entrances to the bus stop off coming off of Dyserd and in and throughout the space. This is also a bus stop off for special education buses and so forth coming in and using the same entrances. We kept the student parking at the northeast corner, below the staff and visitor parking as well, and then most of the event parking just to down south. We know that the site possesses challenges with SRK easement, so we know that for the majority part of the site, the south can only be used as event parking. We also know that there exists an order easement on the site, and the order easement is there due to a water treatment facility expansion that is down south. So to mitigate the order easement, we took your suggestion of locating the gym building to the west-hand side, and replaced the field in the middle in between Performing Arts and the overall PE building. The rest of the athletic fields remain the same. Jason, is there anything I might have missed on this site, or anything in specific that we want to discuss?
Just mentioned that the student entrance, the main student entrance is from the north, so the student parking lot, and all of these entrances were coordinated with the City of Abendale, and for their benefit, coming through the traffic impact analysis and those sorts of things, each one of these criteria was carefully sort of discussed and considered. So when we were arranging the site, if you afford the preference, this was the place that we started with, Abendale, and then up from there. So this is a little bit of context for how the entrance sequences work and how entry and exits work.
Yes, thank you, Jason. We can continue to have discussions on the site. Is there any questions that we can help address before we move on to show you some additional design progress on the academic building?
Any questions from members on the external look of the site plan right now? Number Rotero Mera or Plutero Mera?
None for me.
Okay, thank you so much for presenting that. So with that, you know, I'm going to let my colleague here, Jason Lemke, kind of walk us through the really great just design progress on the academic building.
Thanks, Rotero. So what we brought tonight is some more visualization as well as some detail when it comes to the program arrangement of campus. And so we have this three-dimensional isometric diagram that explains sort of the stacking of campus. We talked last time about campus life and the secure perimeter that students will enjoy outdoor learning and activities in the center of campus. And then if we go up just a little bit from there, you'll see the second floor ring of classrooms in blue, dining in sort of that lighter yellow shade, all kinds of science labs in the darkest color of blue, and then the drawing just to the top of that is additional classrooms stacked on the fourth section of the academic ring. And so with all three of these levels kind of stacking together, you can start to see how the spaces interrelate. I can go into a little bit more detail on the first floor. We talked a little bit about exceptional children, exceptional students there in green last time, and the in-classrooms that they have as part of campus. In the red shaded area is administration, student services, all the core administrative function. We also have spaces for adults throughout the building. And so the adults will be kind of distributed through different work areas and different office opportunities throughout campus. And then as we go up, you can see the density of classrooms sort of increases, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the CTE spaces, as well as the Performing Arts and Music spaces that you see in that lightest green color there. Any questions? Oh, I didn't mention the PE building, which is kind of off to the upper left. So that is currently a two-story volume. You can see the competition courts in the middle on the first floor, the amenities. We're working through the, oh, thank you very much. We're working through the lobby sequence and the proximity to the courts, and then upper level, which would have some additional court space and physical education space. We're trying to keep it as compact as possible, as you can see the site is well utilized. We've taken almost every available corner of the site for building and parking, and so we're trying to keep this building as compact as we can, so that it fits in the parking space and between the field, as was suggested. So move back out for a minute, Cam. Are there any questions on just the general organization of campus, or any of the things that you might see on the panel diagrams?
We go back to the slide, we have the PE and the outdoor stadium. Yeah, I took a question about student walkability. Would they have to get around, they have to go around that whole stadium to get to the PE building, is that right?
So in this configuration, we highlighted kind of the pathway here in orange, this orange dotted line. And so students would operate inside of the secure barrier of campus and would go through this area to get to PE.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, number Rotero Mera or Plutero Mera?
None for me.
So we've also spent the last period of time developing some additional visualizations to hope illustrate some of the spaces inside of campus. And so I'd like to go through some more renderings with you this evening. So you saw in our last presentation, the main entrance. This is the northeast corner of campus where students and visitors alike would enter from their parking, from student parking, from staff parking, from the buses. Pickup and drop-off is on the opposite side of campus. This would be the sort of the main visitor entrance, and administration spaces driving under here. All right, Cam, let's go down a little bit. So as we get into some of the learning environments, this is a new image. We wanted to share some additional interiors, and so this is a classroom space. And so you can kind of see the warmth, the quality of space that we hope to bring to the building. You can see warm tones, unique acoustic features, so that the spaces remain acoustically separate and appropriate for learning. You can see flexible furniture, opportunities for those to be grouped when students are working together, and still separate when students need to work independently from one another. You can see the lovely views that we have to the south of campus towards the mountains. And then when the school colors are selected, you would see the main accent color currently depicted as blue, as opportunities to add access to the 20th of classrooms. The students talked a lot about variety, and really creating vibrant spaces for classrooms, taking away some of the neutral colors and adding some pops of color, which the team has tried to do, do various features inside of the classroom space.
When we're talking about the colors and what the students gave as the feedback, I think areas with like the sport area, the main lobby, maybe that's where we're going to stream on the school color. But everywhere else, definitely the versatility and the spectrum, it could be warm tone, cool tone, depending on the subject matter, that will enhance their space of learning. Definitely not to go one classroom out into another with, you know, deja vu feeling, where they feel stagnant, and I think that was the strong feedback that we heard from the students. So I'd like to hear that the colors are being adjusted, the acoustics above the classrooms and the tables are low, so that the chairs will be more comfortable because they'll create more balance and center their core, instead of those high chairs. Hopefully they'll be removed in the labs, that's where they're actually quite hazardous and not very healthy for these adults with their spinal ailments, and we'll listen to on and on, but definitely foots on the ground, you know, efficient, back to clothes, so it's good to see that.
Great comments, and we're excited too about the opportunity for color and vibrancy in spaces. And so we can vary the colors by floor, we can vary the colors by part of the building if we want to, we can have a variety, and so we're excited to see the next steps as more information becomes available for mascots and colors and those kinds of things. Okay, Cam. These are the things we shared at our last presentation, some of the extended learning collaboration spaces, which were part of our feedback from both teachers and students alike. And so really thinking about opportunities for, opportunities for extended learning outside of the classroom, presentation space, student life space, those kinds of things. So Cam, why don't you scroll through through these? This connects the two of the floors together, it's in the staircase, and opportunities for branding, again, once the school, the school has a mascot, and so on and other collaboration space. All right, let's go down and look at some of our other educational spaces. Last time, we showed you this view of what we nicknamed Performance Plaza. So this is the area of campus where the automotive program exists. Just off-screen to the left is where the Performing Arts Center is. And so Performance Plaza has sort of a dual meaning, obviously in the sort of the sense of automotive, you can see on screen, but also in the sense of performing arts. And so the next image to the right on the screen is an interior view of that blue building we just saw in the previous slide, and would be a space where students could work on both internal combustion engine vehicles as well as electric vehicles. We've allowed for ample storage and tool cribs and all kinds of things that would allow students to have real hands-on experience in this area of expertise. And so we're excited about to open a space just like this for your students to work. As we move over, this is our marketing lab, and so it's just adjacent on the other wall to the right to the art spaces. And so this little part of campus is a really important maker space for students to express creativity through project work or individual work. And so here you can see in Marketing Lab, we have a press or a screen print, opportunities for branding, working with partnerships in the community, academic partners, institutional partners to build brands, and then have real world experience in subjects like, just like this for their marketing. We also have broadcast and podcasts. So this is the broadcast portion of the film in the arts, and so you can see the opportunity for students to have video messages for school, to create announcements, to have a TV station if they so chose. And then this is immediately adjacent to the dining commons. And so sort of like the Rockefeller Plaza experience in New York for MVC, this could function in a similar way for students to have an interactive experience with the larger common spaces. So the podcast spaces are just to the left of the image here off-screen, and are smaller spaces for interviews and recordings as well. And then we're actually standing in one of the control booth editing suites to allow students to then edit their work. So another part of campus life, we shared this image, our last board meeting presented this image of campus life, and then just to the right of it, we rendered the other side of the bridge. This is outdoor dining and additional campus life space, and so we wanted to talk about the dining experience and how students can utilize multiple levels of campus, both inside and outside, to eat and have, you know, culture-building activities and student-life activities. And so this is the outdoor space right here for students to sit outside on this platform. There's also plenty of places for students to sit on turf and visit with their peers or talk about projects, or whatever the case might be. Immediately behind us is the Performing Arts and Music, and so you can see a student here who happens to have an instrument, where you see an opportunity for, you know, small menu music events and sorts of other outdoor performing arts happening right behind us. So this just gives you a little bit of orientation of where we are in campus. If we pan to the right, we're going to go into the lower level, first floor, I guess is about the way to say it, of dining. And so this is just outside of the outdoor dining space. In fact, that's right on the windows right out there. And then you can see students inside being able to gather and eat or gather for educational activities outside of the normal hours of food service. You'll also see in the back here our Culinary Arts Program, and so should there be an opportunity in the future for these students to have a small restaurant for a period of time, or invite the community in for, you know, taste testing, or whatever the case might be, there's an academic opportunity here for those Culinary Arts students to extend into this dining area. And as we walk up the stairs and follow this gentleman up the stairs, we'll see the other upper level of dining, and so you can see some food service back here, and then a beautiful view to the mountains to the south, and then plenty of opportunities for dining at this level. The River Nexus scheme is brought to life through the ceiling feature, and so it's meant to mimic the water movement around stones at the bottom of the river bed, and so you can see that concept brought to life. We also see this as an opportunity for, actually, I'll pause for just to say that the film and broadcast is just off to the screen on this side from where we're standing right now. And so the connectivity that I mentioned between those activities is here, and there's additional CTE spaces, computer science and things like that back here as well. And so this can be an extended learning space as well, when it's not utilized for dining. So we're hoping to incorporate opportunities for presentation, for groups, audio system to support, you know, just like I have now a microphone, so that folks can hear a presentation and things like that. There's another outdoor dining patio right outside of this window here with beautiful views and mountains as well. So lots of opportunities for a generous life, plenty of places for students to stretch out and dine, have easy access to nutrition throughout the day. What else do we have? Okay, that is what we brought for additional images for the board this evening. For thoughts and comments, additional ideas that you might have, happy to take any at all.
Members, any questions regarding the designs and renderings we have for schoolings? Number Rotero Mera or Plutero Mera?
Yeah, I have a question. Are we able to receive this presentation? I don't have access to it, or I can't see the rendering. We should have received them 24 hours prior to this meeting, I believe, and I don't, I don't see any attachments, and I don't have a way to be on YouTube and on the phone at the same time in order to view the presentation.
I will hopefully have the presentation rendered.
Should we have something we can send out?
Yes, yes we do. Yes, we do.
Okay, yeah, we'll work on getting something out. Any other questions from members?
A statement. This is, you know, a common theme working with DLR and the contractors and the builders is the lack of information being presented before the board prior to any of these special sessions or regular meetings. You know, again, tonight not giving this beforehand and being exposed to this is just, you know, unprofessional, and this just has to stop. This kind of, you know, lack of preparation and respect, you know, for all four members is, you know, intolerable. I just, you know, I just can't believe that now we've come this far and we still have not received information prior to a meeting. So please take that comment to part and make something of it moving forward. I do expect more information brought in a timely manner so that we can digest it and not be blindsided, you know, in the meeting, because if you guys want to make a sound decision, this is not to go without it.
Just to be clear, we did see some of these renderings of the previous meeting. The major design change goes from, I'm still hearing you speak.
Chairman, I think that my statement is actually including the president of the gym pack of information has popped forward. There's no need for you to correct my statement in any shape or form. There's nothing for you to chat in because it's totally disrespectful for my comments. You do not mislead or misdirect my statements.
You can wait for your turn.
You can wait for your turn after I'm done talking. I am still talking. I am still talking. I am still talking. So please do not correct my statement. That is so disrespectful. If any of you guys want to make a statement, do you want me to pick up the mic and answer every statement that you guys make? Go do whatever you want, because you will not correct my statement. You correct my statement one more time, then I will correct every statement that you're making right now. I will correct everyone that you're making right now. You don't have a turn when you interrupt and try to correct my statement. You interrupted my statement and made a comment. How dare you? How dare you make that comment? You do not correct a member's comments. You want to correct a member's comments, then that's, you know, that's your business, and that's going to tell me to do every wrong response. Is that what you want? So please do not correct my statement. Move, move. For you guys to correct my statement like that is so disrespectful. Wow, everyone correct my statement.
Yeah, it's so powerful, can take out more than one person at the same time, and you never have to reload.
It can get back security.
I heard it was so small that it can't fit in your pocket. No way my parents will find out about this.
I heard it could strike at the touch of a button.
Report, don't repost.
Stop social media threats now.
It's never a joke.
The benefits of Unified Sports are social participation and the exposure to new activities, things that they might not have had otherwise had opportunities to participate in.
When we build our equipment and our kids who can't typically participate are able to do something independently, the joy that they get from doing the activity for the first time is incredible.
I didn't really like playing in front of people in the beginning because I thought I wasn't good at it. And then once I got used to playing in front of people, I got a little bit out of my shell. And now I'm comfortable playing with other people.
I learned that I needed to be confident.
Confident.
Oh, you want to be more confident?
Yeah.
You learned to be more confident?
Special Olympics has had such an impact on the Arizona community as a whole because we are really focused on community for all. It doesn't matter what kind of situation you're in, what is your disability. We are really here for everybody, making life happen for everybody, making fun happen for everybody because sports are fun.
We've been playing like different kinds of sports, like volleyball. And we played this one game is called that. We were these, we were these like U of course, stuff like that. Like we would have the ball is stopped and we'd throw it to our teammate. Now we just like legit play Batman Day. We started training, been training super hard that day.
Funnest, most happiest people I've ever seen in my life. It's just, every day is just, they have that positivity that can spread everywhere, like it's contagious.
Unified Sports benefits students with and without disabilities in just so many ways. You see them come into the class at the beginning of the year and they're very shy, not very aware of how to act or behave. And then you just see these relationships blossom and then grow. And they truly do become like a team, and they're super close, super tight. And our students really do show really great examples of this throughout competitions. It's really pushing, supporting those that do have disabilities and just having those friendships and building that support and having that support for one another.
I really, I really enjoyed dancing because I learned that when the first time I danced, I was shy. But then I realized that dancing can be not just about dancing, it can be about making memorable memories.
During these past few months of the year, when we started, I feel that the most memorable moment is when we all started playing, not knowing what we were doing, but we still figured it out in front of everyone.
We love everything Unified, bringing people together, athletes, partners, giving them that normal experience of a team. And as a district, we came together and said, let's plan these events, district events.
At first I was coming into it not knowing what to expect. And I feel like that's most cases for like things that you haven't tried before. But I definitely feel that I've grown so much with it, I've learned a lot, and it's something that I want to do more with, like I want to be a part of my future.
I think that you can look at the footage of students and see the smiles on their faces and know that what Unified Sports is offering those students in general is a great deal of independence, success, and joy. I think you can look at any single player and be like, this program is making a difference.
I think the partners too.
For sure.
They get really excited to learn about our switch stuff and all the equipment we use and then encouraging their athlete to participate. So I think it's a growing and learning opportunity for them that they really enjoy.
Join it because it's something where you're going to not only learn how to play a sport, but you're going to learn social skills with different people. Knowing that when we go out into the real world, it's not just going to be us, it's going to be other people. And they're no different than us, but it's just showing that we're going to have that type of connection with special education and just gen ed kids.
I don't know, I just think Unified is one of the greatest programs that high schools can offer. And I hope that we are able to have more and more Unified classes that not just cater to Unified Sports, but then cater to all different opportunities and interests. So hopefully our program just continues to grow.
Why settle for a school that only offers you one thing when you could have a school that offers you everything? Does your school have a cafeteria like this? Or a performing arts center like this? Or a football field like this? Or an innovation center like this? Forward, march! Or a path to the military like this? Or a career and technical education program like this? Or will their digital media program take you here? Or here? Or here? Or a media center like this? You can find all this and more at the Tolleson Union High School District. Enroll now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashley Pollak and I am a math teacher at Tolleson Union High School. I'm here to talk about an important opportunity coming up, the ACT exam on October 22nd. The ACT is the key exam to determining how prepared you are for college, but also opens doors to scholarships and any other financial options. The ACT will also help you jumpstart any current plans you may have for the future, whether that's college, starting a career, or any other potential options. The ACT will also help you better prepare for your final attempt happening in March this year. But it's not just about you. Your performance also benefits our school and our entire district. When you perform well on the ACT, it shows how committed we are to academic excellence. It also leads to more opportunities and resources to all of us. So I encourage you to try your best, aim for proficiency, and show what you are capable of. Remember, if you are in need of any help, talk to a teacher or a counselor for tutoring or practice test opportunities. We all support you and we want you to try your best on October 22nd.
Able to access now the link or should be given a link? You don't have it yet, as I was saying earlier. Some of the renderings are similar ones, some of them are newer ones based on the finished design. And obviously there's exterior changes as we've flipped the statements around. So are there any additional questions from members in regards to the design or the renderings?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes.
Um, not just like in the spot, but are you allowed to just repeat some of the changes that were made from last week to now? I have some trouble hearing since I didn't have the presentation in person I can see it. But now that I'm holding it up, I'm not sure if you're able to, you know, just take a few. Yes. Of course, can you hear me? One more second. Oh, I hear you. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Of course. So you talked about, or had a question about some of the changes from two weeks ago to what we have today here on the screen? And so two weeks ago...
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome. So two weeks ago, asked us to explore relocating the gym to the west-hand side of the site. And to, of course, you all voted to not have the indoor field house anymore, so we approved that. And so the site option that you see on the screen or on the PDF that you have in front of you just shows us relocating the gym to the west-hand side. So that is a change that you see. As we kind of pan over to the side, we didn't change anything on the overall academic building. If we keep going, Kim? Keep going to the... Some of the images that we saw last time were some of the main entrances and the overall sort of like outdoor and collaboration spaces. So here today, we're showing you just again conceptual imagery of what a potential classroom would look like, some additional CTE spaces. And so the images, like the bottom of CTE, the marketing lab, the broadcast podcast center, the indoor dining experience are all new images. If we can...
Mr. Ortega, do you have any additional questions?
Yeah, you mentioned earlier, and I didn't catch the response, about students walking around the field to go to the gym. What was the response to that? Yeah, of course, from Mr. Ortega. So the question was, there was a question on how students would access the PLE building. And so if you can see the orange dashed lines with the arrows, we imagine that the students could access down south to the performing arts, around the overall competition field and onto the PLE building. And still within a pretty secure area.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, those are the walkability and those are options that we'll continue to explore to make sure that they're within a proper distance and so forth.
Any other questions, Mr. Ortega?
That's all, I mean.
Uh, Mr. Ortega, do you have any questions?
My question, I'm ready for it.
Thank you.
All right, since we're just looking changes for the stadium, can we now transition up to the stadium? Are we all done with the layout there? Because then I was pretty much covered before in the previous meetings and we're all okay with it. And the change was for the stadium? Okay, so for the stadium, my question is, what is the amount for the stadium access on the GME? Okay, to help answer that, I'm going to ask...
Hello? So the original amount was eighty million. And so we've reduced that, and we've reduced it by quite a bit. It's about eighteen million of the total GME contract. So it's way down.
Eighteen million?
Yes, eighteen million.
Oh, so the eighteen million is now just the regular field like the other schools?
So there's some components that go into that. It would be what you see at any comprehensive high school campus. It would be the seating that you see on the left and the right side of the field. The field is a synthetic field, like you have at many of your campuses. Also included in that is almost a restroom concessions type building, that little rectangle down in the south part of the camp, of the field. So that's what's included in that.
Is there any way that the stadium can be built in series? Meaning that, because there is an older easement off of the campus site. And that concerns me because when you have, you know, again, either be in the fall or in the warmer seasons, the odor is amplified. And I, you know, this is our community, we know it very well. And it's just a shame that, you know, that the public won't be able to enjoy a more comfortable, you know, surroundings. The older easement with those dairy farms, some of them will be removed eventually, within ten years, you know. But still, you know, still there. And there is a line there that I see that literally goes right through the stadium if it is open. Now, going back to the eighty million dollar stadium, is there any way you could do the bare minimum, the bare bone minimum for an indoor stadium? And how that will be? And if you guys can come back with a draft of that? Because when we have an indoor stadium and with that kind of facility, it will bring pride and joy and promote and attract the best athlete across the entire state of Arizona. And our district deserves the best. I don't want to see something like this and have the community pay for it. Every household that's in that community that would have their kids attending that high school said yes to the indoor stadium. We went door to door and they all loved it. We brought in design to eighteen doors. We brought in design to eighteen doors that opened and said, whoa! This is not for wealthy athletes. This is for our marginalized communities that deserves the best. So I'm asking once again, is there any way that we can see another draft of the stadium at its bare bone minimum, that is indoors, that has a cover? No dome, please. We started off with no dome, we proceeded with no domes, and now we're ending up with no domes. There was never a dome, so please do not use the word dome. And thank you for not putting that in the design and the blueprint. The indoor stadium, just like all wealthy athletes, train and play. And our students will have both acclamation, indoor and outdoor. Give them the opportunity to build indoor ones, indoors, and acclamation outdoors. We have this opportunity to give back to this community. If this was built in the other area, there'd be no question asked. If it was built in Spastel, Paradise Valley, anywhere else, they deserve it. But when it comes to our community, they deserve no. And I find that very, very offensive, but that's just my request. If the board as a collective agrees to that, we can move forward. Otherwise, that's what I'm looking for. We don't need to have every bell and whistle, they can be added later on. But please, I would like to request a design for the bare bone minimum for an indoor stadium.
All right, I'm assuming there are questions about the school design.
So real high altitude budget. This comprehensive campus without the indoor stadium is roughly two hundred and sixty, or two hundred and ninety-seven million. And that's for four hundred thousand square feet of conditioned space.
Okay, so you have any questions? Thank you to our DLR and Chase team for the presentation of school aids. Give me a moment to swap out, then we'll start with the Mr. Campus. Thank you.
There's a new weapon on the market.
Yeah, it's so powerful, can take out more than one person at the same time, and you never have to reload.
It can give us security.
I heard it was so small that it can fit in your pocket. No way my parents will find out about this.
I heard it could strike at the touch of a button.
Report, don't repost.
Stop social media threats now.
It's never a joke!
The benefits of Unified Sports are social participation and the exposure to new activities, things that they might not have had otherwise had opportunities to participate in.
When we build our equipment and our kids who can't typically participate are able to do something independently, the joy that they get from doing that activity for the first time is incredible.
I didn't really like playing in front of people in the beginning because I thought I wasn't good at it. And then once I got used to playing in front of people, I got a little bit out of my shell. And now I'm comfortable playing with other people.
I learned that I need to be confident.
Confident.
Oh, you want to be more confident? You learned to be more confident?
Special Olympics has had such an impact on the Arizona community as a whole because we are really focused on community for all. It doesn't matter what kind of situation you're in, what is your disability? We are really here for everybody, making life happen for everybody, making fun happen for everybody, because sports are fun.
We've been playing like different kinds of sport, like volleyball. And we played this one game is called that. We wear these, we wear these like uniforms and stuff like that. Like we would have the ball is stopped and we throw it to our teammate. Now we just actually legit play Batman Day. We started training, been training super hard that day.
Funnest, most happiest people I've ever seen in my life. It's just, every day is just, they have that positivity that can spread everywhere, like it's contagious.
Unified Sports benefits students with and without disabilities in just so many ways. You see them come into the class at the beginning of the year and they're very shy, not very aware of how to act or behave. And then you just see these relationships blossom and then grow. And they truly do become like a team and they're super close, super tight. And our students really do show really great examples of this throughout competitions, is really pushing, supporting those that do have disabilities and just having those friendships and building that support and having that support for one another.
I really, I really enjoyed dancing because I learned that when the first time I danced, I was shy, but then I realized that dancing can be not just about dancing, it can be about making memorable memories.
During these past few months of the year, when we started, I feel that the most memorable moment is when we all started playing, not knowing what we were doing, but we still figured it out in front of everyone.
We love everything Unified, bringing people together, athletes, partners, giving them that normal experience of a team. And as a district, we came together and said, let's plan these events, district events.
At first, I was coming into it not knowing what to expect. And I feel like that's most cases for like things that you haven't tried before. But I definitely feel that I've grown so much with it, I've learned a lot and it's something that I want to do more with, like I want to be a part of my future.
I think that you can look at the footage of students and see the smiles on their faces and know that what Unified Sports is offering those students in general is a great deal of independence, success, and joy. I think you can look at any single player and be like, this program is making a difference.
I think the partners too.
For sure.
They get really excited to learn about our switch stuff and all the equipment we use and then encouraging their athlete to participate. So I think it's a growing and learning opportunity for them that they really enjoy.
Join it because it's something where you're gonna not only learn how to play a sport, but you're gonna learn social skills with different people, knowing that when we go out into the real world, it's not just gonna be us, it's gonna be other people. And they're no different than us, but it's just showing that we're gonna have that type of connection with special education and just gen ed kids.
I don't know, I just think Unified is one of the greatest programs that high schools can offer and I hope that we are able to have more and more Unified classes that not just cater to Unified Sports, but then cater to all different opportunities and interests. So hopefully, our program just continues to grow.
Why settle for a school that only offers you one thing when you could have a school that offers you everything? Does your school have a cafeteria like this? Or a performing arts center like this? Or a football field like this? Or an innovation center like this? Forward, march! Or a path to the military?
Yes, seven oh six. And to spread awareness to reintroduce our team to the District Campus. Yes, Mr. Chapman, and our board, we have DLR, our construction here to present to us the District Campus.
Awesome, thank you so much, Paul. And hello, good evening, again, Private Pauline, project manager here with DLR Group. And with me today, I have my partner, Rida with Wood Architects, and as well as my partner and partners, Tyler and Dr. Lina Mair. And we are, we received your questions, Dr. Lina Mair, and so we are prepared today to answer them. And to help facilitate that conversation, we have printed full plans and site plan here. We also have the presentation that we gave two weeks ago and we can help facilitate and help answer questions to that one. The other part that we did is through your questions, Dr. Lina Mair, we've actually, to really just help clarify and be able to answer them successfully, we've organized them in architectural related questions. We've also talked, we also kind of gave them instructional cost questions and then we finalized with founding resource questions. So with that, we can go ahead and address your questions. So, Dr. Lina Mair, you asked, why does the three-story building appear to cantilever the lower wall? How much does this cost and are there lower costing alternatives? And so I would like to start by just saying that really the cantilever serves two purposes. And maybe we find an image where we can potentially see that. Actually, maybe in this image here, you actually see the cantilever portion of the building here. And so what this does is it's actually creates a covered outdoor place space for the founding resource center. This is where the team and the teleforens are actually located. And it also sort of allows us to stack square footage vertically instead of being able to expand the wall by a little bit. If we actually eliminated the cantilever, we would actually increase in cost because we would be adding this square footage back at the ground level. So this means more foundation, more site work, and naturally a larger building footprint. So we find that the cantilever is actually a more cost-effective solution.
For those of us without a technical background in architectural design, what's a cantilever?
That is a good question, poor member, Devon Palacio. I was surprised then, Dr. Lina Mair, actually knew what a cantilever was. And it was actually a really great observation on her part. And so in very, very simple terms, it is just a overhang metal thing, right? So if you look at this rendering here, this portion of the building overhang is just slightly bit, yeah.
It's this shaded area that's here.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, and it's a bit of a point, it was too, it does save square footage, which is the ultimate consolidation of footprint. So it's actually a more affordable structure.
With that, Dr. Lina Mair, are there any other questions on this?
Uh, no, not a specific one, thank you.
Okay, awesome. So the second question that you asked, Dr. Lina Mair, is what purpose does the ramp serve joining the single-story building and the two-story building since they appear to only be forty feet apart, excuse me? How much does that cost? And to answer that, I'm going to go to slides, go to the site plan. And I think what you may be referring to, Dr. Lina Mair, is this section here. So that is not a ramp, that is actually an enclosed festival connection between the two buildings. And what this does is actually really just allows the staff and the students to move between the buildings. And it's in a protected, climate-controlled space. And it's, you know, without having them be able to access the outside. And it also serves as a dividing element between the two courtyards, which helps with supervision and security. The festival is approximately fifteen hundred square feet and really without it, people wouldn't need to exit one building and re-enter to the other side. And that actually creates issues, right, with weather?
This is no longer being recorded.
Okay, awesome. And with that, Dr. Lina Mair, we believe we've answered that question. Do you have anything else you can help clarify?
But no, I'm not too much to thank you.
One problem, one, Rida, as a-
Yeah, I'll be good.
Awesome. So, Dr. Lina Mair also asked, what is the reason for not adding a kitchenette close to the boardroom like we currently have? Can this be added? And to help clarify that question, thank you, Rida. So that, we do have a kitchenette on the shop and maybe, I think there is a level one, Rida, that we could potentially slide eleven. There it is, thank you. So, Dr. Lina Mair, the kitchenette is actually located right adjacent to the boardroom. And in this case, we didn't call it kitchenette, it's actually just labeled more kitchen, but it is exactly replicated to what you have currently in the boardroom. And with that, I believe we've answered that question. Is there anything else we can help clarify on that one? Okay. The next question you asked, Dr. Lina Mair, is the boardroom appears to seat seventy people. How did you calculate that this is sufficient space? And how do you plan to address overflow, the current boardroom versus the existing boardroom? So we understand that your actual current boardroom is around twenty-five hundred square feet. The new boardroom that we have proposed here is about twenty-eight hundred square feet. And the adjacent training room is actually an additional eight hundred and thirty-six square feet. So that is a total of about three thousand seven hundred square feet total. Of course, the tables and the furniture that is shown on that floor plan is just for scale. So we understand that with flexible seating arrangements, the new board can accommodate up to two hundred people. So that is significantly just a little bit larger than your current capacity. And of course, for overflow, we've designed the boardroom with upper wall systems so that they can open adjacent to the overall courtyard. And this will allow you to expand into the outdoor space for larger community meetings and overall events.
So my comment, if I may-
Of course, thank you.
Is that maybe we can expand the boardroom if we remove the board members in office and have that next to the superintendent's office on the third floor. And then now we'll open up the space. And then remove the conference room in the back where the board members' office are at, or somewhere along there. office are at, or somewhere along the same way, to be a little bit bigger. The reason why the boardroom is only three hundred square feet larger in the adjacent will be out of view, so it won't be conducive. But if we expanded, remove the conference room and the board members, and move all that to the third floor with the superintendent's, you know, space, because he doesn't need all that space. And the board member has to... I appreciate it if you guys do not disrupt this meeting with your heckles and boos. That is the camp's policy. If I hear it one more time, I request for you guys to be removed. Thank you. So if we could have the third floor where we have the superintendent's office and have that scaled down and make sure that every board member's office is equally square feet with the superintendent's. Yes, we may not be there as often, but we, our presence is to be known. You know, this is our district. We are the board. Anything and everyone is, you know, under our supervision. And we are the eyes, the ears, and the voice of the community. So if we can have that moved up, and as well as, you know, other areas that we may have to scale down. What's the current budget for this district office? Is it sixty-five million?
That is what we understand, essentially.
Okay. I was told early on that it was twenty million. And then I said, we need to raise it up because of the, you know, the design I was having in mind. And that's where everything went MIA, you know, radio silence. And then you guys came up with this, and I was just appalled, you know, from not having our input whatsoever. So I'd like to propose that if we could scale this back down to twenty million dollar district office, or might as well not even have it, and just keep it, you know, current district office in policy. I want to keep this undecided. There's no, you know, accommodation, there's nothing, nothing for the board, nothing for the community as far as the input and the, you know, buildup of this. You know, that's where it's so offensive. But I don't know where to start, I don't know where to end. But sixty-five million dollars is, it's just, it's just too much. It's just too much. Because we have other districts that build their district office at twenty-five million. So I think we can, you know, do the same thing. And if that's gonna be in dispute, we might as well just keep it here in policy with the current, you know, status. You know, I am asking you guys respectfully to keep the noise down. Applause is not something to be accused of. Champion, please, do not interrupt me. I can make a statement without your intervention. So if you could please stay silent, if you could stay silent, I can talk to the audience when they're huddling and booing and making applause when it's not necessary. We don't need this kind of feedback. As a board, we can make our decisions on our own. So please, respect the process. I would like to have calm, so we can hear and make our decisions wisely. It's not gonna please everybody, but please, no more heckling. Heckling, booing, applause, it doesn't help.
Well, if I may, we have, there's a bunch of questions that are going to be, that we're going to address further down the road to answering your questions specifically about the design of the boardroom. The intention here was to give the board members their own separate spaces and their own private access. The actual boardroom, for the record, is larger than the superintendent's suite for the five offices, the conference room, which...
I was going to say that the five board space is larger than the superintendent's office?
The area designated for the board is larger than the superintendent's.
So you're talking about the conference room included?
Yeah, we'll show you the third floor, because that's another question that...
So what I'm saying is that you're putting five board members together to make one superintendent. Because my ratio count is, you need five superintendents to even barely make one board member. Like, were we just, you know, a collective? Because what kind of ratio, what kind of number did I come up with? Like, what does five boardroom combined with the space is equivalent to one superintendent's occupation, occupying spaces? Because are you telling me that all across the board, district office, the superintendent gets more of a luxe environment than anybody else because he is in charge? Or are you saying that we're just not there enough to earn our place? That is equal to the superintendent? Now, I didn't ask for super, we didn't ask for a larger space in the superintendent. We didn't. I said equal. So what I'm talking about per board member. Don't ever up us up when it comes to saving spaces.
No, if I may, the way that the office broke down, there's equity across the whole campus. The executive offices are larger than the standard offices, which are larger than some of these accessory offices. You can see that your offices here where the boardroom...
It looks smaller than the superintendent's office.
The executive offices are bigger, but they're circled distributed throughout all of the floors for every department. We can show you those as we get over to it.
It's smaller than the superintendent's space.
The board, the board office?
Each board office is smaller than the superintendent's office.
That's correct.
Then why are we even having this discussion when I made my statement so clear? What kind of rebuttal is this when we come full circle to my original statement? Do not, do not engage in this kind of dialogue with me. This is so disrespectful. If you don't want to hear what we're trying to say to you, this is not going to work. Do not combine five offices equal to one superintendent, and then now come to full circle to say, yes, one board office is smaller than the superintendent's office. And that was my original statement.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm a little confused because the offices, they are collectively bigger than the superintendent's offices. It's just that...
Not collectively, I'm one board member. I only have my one office for myself. It has to be the same size as the superintendent's. Either he has scaled down, we need to scale up. That's equal. The board, we represent the community, not the other way around.
Yeah, I think I assume you're getting at, as far as attaching it to the boardroom and all that makes sense. And the reason for having a conference room on that floor as opposed to moving it would be for executive sessions, giving access to, for when we're doing expulsion hearings, conferences of legal counsel, things like that, similar to the...
We're not talking about the conference room. The conference room, I already made a statement that it can be stayed where it's at. What I'm talking about is the board office, the board offices, the individual offices.
Yeah, that's right.
That needs to be the same size as the superintendent's. Either his office scales down, or ours scales up, or vice versa. It has to be equal.
I'm just for my thoughts on what the way it is, but...
Yeah, I just have feedback or comments, rather. I do like the idea of expansion for the board meetings, even if it is off to the side. I know, just like we have it set today, there are, you know, obviously TVs everywhere, to where they can get video feedings right there around the way. So I like that. I also like the option to expand outdoors. I think that's a unique option as well, if we needed to.
Yeah, that's...
Is the two-hundred seat count, is that indoor, right? Is that the total seat count for indoor space?
Yes.
But two-hundred, I mean, I don't even know if some city counts accept the two-hundred seating capacity for meetings. And maybe they do larger stadiums, but I still think that's a good starting point, and we have the auxiliary spaces if needed. And in terms of the board offices, me personally speaking as an individual board member, I couldn't care less about size, or what's small or what's big. I don't have any preference there. I'm more conservative in ensuring that the space is adequate for staffing needs, and quite frankly, the family resource center. And so I'll pause for there and allow you to continue.
Yeah, we have comments about the family resources. We're gonna address those individually.
Well, the thing is that the board offices needs to be next to the superintendent's office on the third floor, in the stair that goes straight down to the board, just like his have access all the way down to the board. Now, the conference room can stay on the first floor, you know, for executive sessions, whatnot. But that will open up the space with the boardroom for the public. Because we have to think about, you know, the public first, you know, and then all of the rest of that is, you know, the secondary.
So there's no, I'm agreeing with you. There's no, there's no second level to that, to that part of the building?
No, I'm just saying that we may have to arrange it in a way that it will be, you know, directly going down to the office. Otherwise, you know, this, like I said, we didn't have the input. So it's really, you know, hard for us to come in and just move furnitures. And I know nobody likes that, but this is what happens, you know, when you have all the stakeholders involved in step one. You know, we're now at step twelve, and, you know, we're wasting so much time and energy. And, you know, ultimately, it's the five board members to decide. And yet, we were not given the opportunity to put in our statements. And, you know, that's on you guys. You know, don't come and look at me now and say like, well, you know, this is the way it is. I'm like, no.
If I may, we did take that into consideration. The superintendent doesn't have direct access to the boardroom.
I'm not saying you have direct, I'm saying it's, you know, going down the stairs and you have access.
No, if I may, the idea was to make it as accommodating to the board as possible. The individual offices, the private balcony, the conference room, the proximity to the kitchen. The idea there was...
So you're thinking about board members just during a board meeting, you know, of some of our, every board member is so different, with some doesn't show up to do shit, right? And some of us... Yes, I stand corrected. I would also consider certain board members are more engaged than, like, some of our, you know, veterans and new board members. There's a lot of thought that is not here, that I'm not seeing. We can all speak for one board, you know, and then you go down the row, and there's four more, and you can get four different, you know, input. What I'm trying to say to you is that the future board members as well, things change. Everywhere changes. But that change has to accommodate, I'm sorry, the designs have to accommodate those changes. So you guys have to think, we have one employee, our office needs to be close to the superintendent's office. And both offices, the superintendent's and the board members, have to have access to the boardroom when the time comes. You know, that is when I had to trek across campus, you know, just down the, down the flyer stage, you know, that, that style. But, you know, and then there we are on the dais next to our conference. You know, you guys have everybody's staff's input, but ours. And it's a shame, it really is. In the previous meetings, you guys heard my dissent and my displeasure. It's that, you know, these things will ultimately come before the five board members to make a decision. Again, now I'm questioning, do we really need this district office? I mean, for the future board members, is it best for us to stay put? Is this necessary? So I would like to ask if we can have a plan, blueprint of a mild expanding of the current district office, where we can have a little bit more space for the cubicles and expanding spaces into stay put. I think that could, you know, run maybe around ten million for the adaptation of the current district. That way, we can save fifty thousand million dollars of taxpayers' money.
Any more questions? If you have anything?
Of course.
Yeah, we'll come back to some of these points.
So the next question here was asked by Dr. Luna Nihara. So you asked, some of the departments, grants, CTE, and services appear to have a lot of underutilized spaces. How can you actually make these spaces more efficient? And thank you, Rita. So the space that you're actually seeing here accounts for plant growth in each of these departments. So we know that your current district office has overcrowding issues. Storage rooms are being used as offices, there's limited sort of locations, and of course, limited collaboration spaces. So what we've actually been able to do is we have programmed the new district office to help accommodate with that growth. And we really expect it to satisfy in the next ten, fifteen years, so those departments don't become overcrowded from day one.
Yeah, we would like to just point out that the space that we're allocating for these departments will accommodate the growth, which is one of the big concerns that we're having with the district office now. There's not enough storage, there's people sharing spaces. And so the idea here, we're looking at it, is that this furniture has with the boardroom, it's just a placeholder. And so this does work, and it's comfortable, and it's open. But if you do need to add more cubicles down the road, this has been incorporated in. We have other committees that show that specifically when we look at... That you can see some of these areas where we're showing are areas that per the request of the department, wanting to expand here. So we're taking that into consideration so that this building will accommodate the needs for several...
Thank you, Rita. With that, Dr. Luna Nihara, do you have any more questions? Or that's enough?
No, not a question.
So the next question you asked, Dr. Luna Nihara, is why is there not a layout of the superintendent's space on the third floor available for review? And actually, the superintendent's space is available for review, but it's part of the third floor floor plan. And so if we go to level three floor plan, Rita, let's go back to this, start.
We have it, we have it.
Yep, we have the floor plan here.
We have the floor plan here. It says the superintendent's suite. You guys can see it on the show.
Of course. And if you wanted to answer Dr. Luna Nihara's question, superintendent office was portrayed by the left key, it says superintendent's office. So if you want to show that on the floor plan?
I mean, just for the record, currently, the board members do not have an office. We do not have a desk. We don't even have a chair. We have nothing. And as much as I would love to have my own, you know, board member office in this new district, I suggest that, you know, the status quo would be more humbling for all members involved. This is not about grandeur, it's about equity. It's about, you know, being part of the process because the five board members, or, you know, we are the voice, you know, you know, and for the community. And we cannot continue to have this kind of, you know, setup with no input from the board whatsoever. You know, this is getting to a point where this is so disappointing, so disheartening, that staffs get to make decisions when there are not the elected officials. We're the elected officials. We make the final decision as the board. We don't really need the desk. We work for free. We're public servants. We're happy to serve, happily. And when we're being this, this level of disrespect is unacceptable. This kind of overspending, overlux, it's, you know, it's disgusting. And I would love to have this for all of us if we was under different circumstances. The strength, the budget, the representation is just not there. I think I, I implore my fellow board members to reconsider about this district office. Either we scale it down, or none, none at all. This is just not the time, the place to have this right now.
And, Dr. Luna Nihara, the next question we have on here from you is to share what type of air conditioning will be included and explain its efficiency. And so I'm gonna ask my partner here to help answer that question.
So the district office will be utilizing a combination of rooftop air handler units and DX air handling units for the large building. We've coordinated with the Great Wall Team to ensure we're aligned with the district's standards and also provide optimal efficiency for these systems. So any questions? Let's do that. Dr. Luna Nihara?
We apologize, Dr. Luna Nihara, and we could not hear your comments. We apologize, Dr. Lina Nihara, and we could not hear your comments.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you go, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, no, this is Dr. Lina Nihara, and, uh, no, thank you for answering that question.
The next question we have here, it says, it asks, it appears that there were no civil drawings at the time at this GMP, none are listed on page 13 of your document. What kind of exposure does the board district have approving this large project with no drawings? But then I'd ask that another one to help answer.
Thank you. Um, I can see the confusion on why that question was asked. If we reference that document, you'll see that civil drawings were- Sorry about that. Civil drawings were actually provided, their sheets C1 through C8. Uh, they did not have veins on them the time that we received them. But we do have a full set of civil documents, um, as well as an appropriate survey for the site, as well as, excuse me, the appropriate soils testing. So we do have a complete number, first of all, and there is, there is zero risk to the district again in regards to that scope of work.
Anything further we can clarify on that question? Eighty-five thousand square feet, I assume? Okay. The next question that was asked here is justify why your allowance for exterior digital signage of 1.5 is reasonable? And why is such an expensive signage package? Um, so just to kind of clarify here, the 1.5 million is really a placeholder, right? It's an allowance for a large-scale exterior digital signage. Thanks for that, if you could point to where it's located. So, um, the idea here, it's similar to what we see at the Miami Resort across the freeway. And this type of signage, we know that can generate revenue for the district through advertising leases. Of course, we're currently working with the city of Landville to make sure that this is actually even allowed for us to do. And so, um, we're looking at overall sort of requirements, this is entirely optional. And so if the district decides to not pursue, or the city comes back and says that we are actually not allowed to do this, um, that 1.5 million really just comes off the project and it will go back. Is there anything further that we can clarify on that question? Okay. Um, the next question here is, we have-
Hi, just for the record, and I, I know it sounds rocky, there is a delay on the phone forming. So when you ask, ask your question, it does make me a little bit free of questions to be answered by the- I might make myself dispute. Uh, so I'm not ignoring, I'm just trying to keep up. Um, and I, I don't know how to give you a thumbs up or not, uh, just for, uh, time space to move along. Because I, I don't have, um, a lot of public questions, but I also don't want to get, uh, left without being able to answer my question because of the time lapse in the phone call.
Understood. The next question we have here is, uh, provide a detailed schedule for the district office from present to estimate a completion date of January 2027. And to help answer that, I'm going to ask Tyler or Art to help.
Yeah, I'll go for that, thank you. Sorry, one second, thank you. Um, I'll answer that, Dr. Lina Nihara. Uh, we have one year to accomplish the schedule and an overview of what that is. We intend to mobilize on site in January of '26. Pending approval, um, the building structure and envelope will be complete by September of 2026. Final completion, building interiors, mechanical systems, et cetera, were scheduled to complete in January of 2027.
The next question we have is, why does this project have an 8% general condition, general requirements? Typically, we see a 6% or 7% is more standard.
I'll take that one. So, um, the GCs are very specific to this project. They're all within the range of the 65 million plus project value. They're basically reflected based on the schedule and labor resources required to improve, um, this project. And so, um, they're, they're within that range and it typically expects to see. Can you follow on that question?
Okay. Next question that was asked is, why is the cost per square foot $724 for this project when other more complicated projects in the neighboring district is $642? And what can be done to double our costs?
Yeah, this is a very good question. Um, you know, pricing of the building itself is reflected of the communicated needs of the district, the scope of the work, as well as the, uh, project schedule and the site that it sits on.
There is also a question here that talks about a breakdown of value engineering. I would consider, accept it, and reject it. And there is just another question that could be grouped with that that will touch base here and if you. Um, so to move on, eh, there is a question as well regarding solar installation. And does the GMP include solar? And if not, what is the estimated cost for solar?
Yes, I can take that one. So solar is not a key currently in the GMP. Uh, that stands outside our scope of work, regular plan and current approaches. A district will put that right at the outset of the GMP. Therefore, we're not putting the price or estimating that at the current start right now.
The next question here is, your basis of GMP on page 19 is, is based on a presentation dated November 5, 2025. Was that presentation given to you?
Yes, I can take that one as well. So that presentation was a progress presentation presented to the Tulsa Project Day Show team as part of the design progress update. And so we just referenced that document in our two-year submission.
Next question, eh, there is a reference here to page 19 that states McCarthy provided plumbing and H vac documents. Who developed those drawings and who was paid to develop them? The contractor or, um, the design guy?
Yes, I'll take that one as well. So yes, we, as part of our, uh, pre-construction process and work with the DLR, we've developed a set of operation documents for the mechanical employment scopes of work to help create some of the scope gaps. Um, that was part of our pre-construction services, also by the cops of the district. Ultimately, DLR is responsible for designing the mechanical plumbing systems.
The next question is, eh, were multiple bids solicited for each major scope? And were there any value engineering alternatives proposed?
I'll take that one as well. Uh, yes, uh, we, we, uh, receive multiple bids for the various scopes of work. Um, and we're following the requirement of the district and also the state of our terms of offer.
Yeah, of course, and to help kind of elaborate on some sort of value engineering. So when we started the original programming and visioning session, we were at approximately 105,000 square feet. And so through discussions and user group, we were actually able to reduce that square footage about 20,000 to 50 square footage that we're at now about 85. Um, the other sort of value engineers that we talked about was overall exterior materiality and then as well, the mechanical systems was also considered. The next question we have here is, what was the original 30 million RFQ estimated based on? And so from what we understand, we know that that was, uh, based on a previous district office design with a different program. And we understood that that original program was about 36,000 square feet. And I believe at the time of that estimate, it was about $28 million. The next question we have here is, can you provide a detailed line item comparison between the original 30 million estimate and the current 65 million budget?
Yeah, I'll take that one, thank you. Um, McCarthy did not provide a previous estimate on the $30 million. And so we really can't provide a cost comparison associated with that $30 million. However, we can provide any information on our estimate that is requested.
The next question that kind of gets with the plan is a providing more detailed breakdown of costs on GMP comments on page seven for a project this large, 21 line items, since minimal and oversimplified.
Yeah, I'll take that one as well, thank you. So each, each project and each, um, estimate in GMP is approached differently based on the needs of the district, where we are with that, with design, excuse me, with design. Uh, the team, uh, approached the project in uniform format, um, type of estimate. And what that really does is allows the teams to focus on specific building systems. And in that process, it provides the GMP layout that you see. It's still, uh, regardless of the, um, the format provided, the dollar figure is the same.
The next question we have that is a little more on that is, how much of the 65 million is design fee and contractor fee?
Uh, contractor fee, uh, our C M R fee is 5.2%.
And of course, the design fee is actually set through our M D P A agreement. And this case is quite considering 5.2%. The next question we have here is, what specific scope changes have been made since the original 30 million budget? And if, since the original 30 million budget was actually established? And so just to really kind of clarify that, the 30 million budget was provided by the entire architect on this project. And that was approximately, um, two years ago. And so we understood that at that time, the district office was planned for about 36,000, um, square feet for roughly $28 million. And of course, since then, there have been really two major changes that occurred. So we did add the family resource center and of course, um, DLA, which added approximately 15,000 square feet to the project. And of course, there are market conditions that exist, right? So the two-year gap really means that we're dealing with construction cost escalation and of course, the current tariffs that weren't actually factored into the original estimate. So the 30 million budget was what we see, a smaller billion, very different cost environment.
We also did factor in the growth that was requested by the departments. And, um, for important, try consolidating as square footage as less as possible. Our actual cost per square foot is 20% less than the original, and what that was given to per square foot.
So I have a comment about the previous architect, uh, that, um, estimated to be $30 million two years ago, and I understand the inflation. But that doesn't really, you know, bring a balance of how, of 30 to 65 million. And to help the board find that out just recently in that process. I mean, this question actually goes to our superintendent on how that happened. And, and again, how the board was not involved, you know, in the design. And, uh, you know, it just looks, you know, very, you know, taking advantage of taxpayers' money without the eyes and ears of the board members. It's not a question of, you know, is this something that would be suited for Tulsa and the history of the district? We are maxed out with our age school. It's not going to grow bigger, with the exception of microschools being there. Our staffs and the district compared to other districts, I mean, we are practicing the resources and, and, um, you know, space. We had a direction going into this, but somehow it didn't. But for the board members. And, um, we have to be held accountable, you know, for everything that happens in this district. Like every one of us is accountable for it. When I say everyone, we're talking about the five board members. You know, the hits and, uh, you know, the, uh, you know, information that came, or the lack of information that came, came with that, with our superintendent. Okay, can you just look back at this, laughing like you know? Now. Do you believe that?
Superintendent-
Okay, so as I was saying, like, we can't just continue to have a superintendent and his district members to run the show without including the board members. Some of the board members may be okay with that, because I don't know what happens behind the doors. But the majority of the board has no clue of what happened with this district office. And to say that, well, you were part of this part, in this part, we need to be part of it from beginning to end. I know some of you guys informed me that you guys were hoping to get us involved, but it wasn't the decision that you guys can make. And I was patient and I wanted to make sure that we have, you know, the opportunity that we can all collaborate and work as a team. Um, but to say that, you know, we didn't have any say, now they changed things around and now we may have to reconsider, um, but the cost that came after the 30 million and now to 65 million, that's just a huge jump, you know? Without the board, you know, being notified of that. I mean, you guys have to understand that is a sticker shot. We haven't allowed the public to answer that. It's not a sticker shot to you guys, because you guys went step by step, right? And you guys who were involved understand step by step. But the board members are like sticker shopped. And we do have to answer to the public.
Well, if I, if I may, uh, the increase in cost comes with a dramatic increase in scope. And the goal of this project was to consolidate all the departments, accommodate for the growth, and also, uh, very much consider the community involvement. And we'll get to that with a future question about the family resource center, the distance learning, and some of the, the amenities spaces that we're providing for the staff that are working there. We spent a lot of time talking to the departments, the everyday users, about what their needs were, what, what they needed to be successful with the district. And so the intention of this is not to put anybody against anybody. We're really trying to get all of the pieces in one place. Open green space, nice, you, you, the current district offices just don't accommodate the needs. This is why we're sitting here. They don't accommodate the growth, everybody's tripping all over each other over there. The idea here was to bring it all together. The increase in budget, I understand your concern, but it's, it's not really apples to apples. There's a huge increase in the project scope. And the idea was to consolidate all of these departments and the family resources, the community, into less space for the district.
Right, why are the current district office is actually larger than most district offices? With the staff and the numbers. We can compare it with other districts. I understand it is crowded. I mean, you know, want it to be larger and nicer, you know, for all members of the board. I think the question that I, and the concern that I have is that we weren't a part of that process. And that if they or whoever feels that we don't need to, that's a huge mistake. Because that's written in statute, you know, that we are to be the voice, the eyes, and ears for the community. And these are their money. It doesn't belong to any of us. It doesn't belong to you. It doesn't belong to me. It doesn't belong to anybody at the district office or anywhere in the district office. It belongs to the community that the five board members represent. We're not here to say we're going to call all the shots. But we need to be involved every step. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat this over and over again, because, you know, you want me to understand that just because some feels that's okay, then we're not doing our job. As board members, we, we have to know what is going on. If not, then what's the point of us being here? And this is a lot of taxpayers' money. And this is, you know, on a whole level. And we have this literally probably the most luxurious district office in the whole entire state. If that is our goal, that should probably go to the board and be notified and say this is our end goal. And let's work together and let's get this done. But the community wasn't involved.
I understand.
So, uh, so we're, uh, so we're not going to speak to the staffing process. And obviously, uh, just from the previous presentation, uh, there was stakeholder input as far as the community aspects of the building and the family resource. And we went through tons of, um, community forums and panels and things like that that I don't want to get to. But I just generally want for, um, from your business side, like, well, I know we keep hearing about the, um, another- But so you just generally want for, uh, from your business side, like, well, I know we keep hearing about the, um, another quote from the architect. I don't believe that there was ever any kind of agreement or P you put out there, so can you talk about both those things?
Yes, so this, this project is about almost three years in the making. Uh, the original concepts that were brought forward, uh, the first concept was to look at, uh, creating a building that joined, uh, the A and B building. And we were working with our architect back then, they said it was not going to be structurally possible to do that. So then we moved off of that idea. The next idea we moved towards was to create a T-shaped building on Van Buren. Uh, we heard from the community that they were upset with that. We had board members who then, you know, said that we're going to have to move off of that idea as well. So we, at the time that we were doing the T-shaped building, there was no C-Mark, did not have a contractor on. We had an architect shooting from the hip who estimated that that thirty-six thousand square foot building was going to be about twenty-eight million dollars, which is a higher cost per square foot than what this building is coming out to. At that same time, we're also planning for our family resource center that was going to go on the dirt south of the district, the current district office. So we're going to have the family resource center. We're going to build a new building for distance learning academy. We're going to build a new building for lighthouse and a new building for CEA. All of those projects have now come together and the collective of all those projects exceeded, even under the estimates that we had back then, exceeded what we're talking about in this current building. With this current building, not only do we now have space for the distance learning academy would be in this building, but also our family resource center would be in this building. And the vacated district office is going to become home to CEA and possibly lighthouse. Uh, we'll see as the next bond goes through and we're able to make some renovations to the existing district office. But we had five separate projects. We have found a way to take those five separate projects and essentially bring them into one new construction and one remodel to be able to accomplish the five things that we were trying to do before. And the combination of five, far as see what we're talking about spending on this particular project. We've had board involvement throughout the process, going all the way back to why we came off that T-shaped building that was going to replace the existing parking area. We even, we even went out and bought additional land to build a new park south of Tulsa. So we've had board involvement there. This particular site in Glendale, Member Sun did, you know, set up the meeting with, uh, Glendale to be able to find this site that is now being looked at for the district office. Who was involved in that, that aspect of it. Uh, talked to board members about, about their needs and what we needed to get built into this complex, including, you know, the board member offices, the, the, the board room. Uh, we for a long time looked at a project of creating an elevated board room, uh, the, the stage, the platform area of the existing board room. So that was almost a separate project until we got ready to move forward with a new district office. And it was board members back then who said we needed, we need an elevated stage for the dais. And, and then we eventually went to, we just need to be doing a new district office. It's going to take too much to retrofit this district office to the thing that everybody needs. Now, as for the specific department areas, absolutely. I, I am collaborative. I, I let my teams come forward and talk about what their needs are. They have all met individually with the architects, whether it's the new school or the district office. All of the teams have worked with the architects and they brought their needs forward. Uh, it's not like I sit down and say, you know, I'm the superintendent, let me go ahead and draw this whole school and tell you guys to go build it. No, they meet with all of the teams. They ask them, you know, what are, what are your current needs? What are your future needs? What do you see as your vision for your department and where you're going to grow? How can you best utilize the space? How can the space be most conducive to, to high levels of success for you? And they've, they've brought that together in, into this design. And I, I think they've actually done a phenomenal job taking everybody's input and bringing it together into this design, which is where we're at now. Uh, so I, I think, uh, you know, we've, we've hit all the major things that we've been working towards for the last three years. That's been through community surveys, that's been through working with staff, that's been working with everybody who has to work in these spaces, forty-plus hours a week, every week. Right, they're, they're, this is like a second home of where they're going to be. They had input on, on how these, these spaces would be laid out. And so it's been a, a very collaborative process and I appreciate the architect and the G C leading that process.
Well, based on superintendent guys' statement, it's, uh, it's pretty oppressive. It's the fact that we get to have a forum as input and then we can call it a day. Superintendent guys, you're not in charge. I mean, how many times have we had to remind you? The board needs to be part of the process from start to end. We don't just get to go find the land and then say, we're going to get a board room and then call it a day. If we're going to have community input as we should, then what's the point of us being here? We had input from the community with the high schools, which is great. And the board were a part of that process. Again, let's get really to the nitty gritty. The board was not involved from start to end. That's it. Everything else, there's no strong evidence or any, or any statement that makes this anything fair for the community. As the board, we are the community. If you guys have community input, that does not, you know, null our input. Oh, well, we get the community's input, so we don't need the board's input. Because that's basically what I'm hearing from superintendent guys' explanation. Yes, I found the land, thank God. And if we don't use this land, this is a great investment. Regardless, this is, this is prime land for the district.
So, Member Sun, President Chapman, uh, so that you're not putting words on my mouth. Uh, the board is here to govern. The board has given direction that this was a project that the board wanted us to pursue, recognizing the working conditions of our staff in their current arrangement. So the, the board has had input. This, this idea that, that a single board member should be functioning as superintendent, uh, no, like, the actual day-to-day work, the, the oversight of staff, the evaluation of staff, like, that is not for individual board members to do. Now, if there are three board members, as I have stated before, if there are three board members who want to tell me that you need to see five board member offices that are just as big as the superintendent's office and you need to be right next door to the superintendent, I'm not going to be in support of it. I see three votes for that, that's, we'll go back and tell them to go design.
All right, superintendent guys, you cannot hold information from the board and then claim that you don't have three votes. So you get to do whatever you want. Every section of this office, every square foot, every board member needs to know. Have I ever once said myself, I've always addressed us as the board? Every board member, every one of us, every five, needs to know every section of this district office before it comes to a meeting for a vote of any sort or a discussion. That has not happened. And for superintendent guys to accuse one board member when they have never went out of that jurisdiction. If not, we have past, present leadership that has overreached. But when I was in leadership, I stand corrected and I listened and complied, maybe too much. I am now making all the corrections of the lies that superintendent guys just made, which is so inappropriate, so inappropriate, so unprofessional. Call me out that I found the land, great. What's so bad about that? I can't change my mind about what I want to be built on this land as one board member's input? Yes, I'm allowed to have that input, just like any other board members here that can make that input. But to have our subordinate superintendent to correct us and to mislabel us as one board member to do whatever we want? When did we ever get to do that? I mean, state statute doesn't allow us to behave in that fashion. We all have to work together. And for him to sit there and to go there and to oppress information, withhold information and to lie about information with timeline, chronicle, you know, timelines, orders, so that he can twist whatever he wants to say and to accuse the board of misdeeds when in fact, he's the one who will hold the information so that he can't get three votes override him or whatever he thinks he's going to do.
This is way, way off topic.
You know, I think it's with him, oh, the taboo, like, no, this slander statement made from the superintendent. And I can make my own defense comment. He made comments directly to me about me finding the land and I'm addressing that. And he also made the comments about one board members thinking that they can make all the decisions. When in fact, if you're the vote that can make a difference, it's not one, it's still the board.
And that's why we're here.
And we are going to proceed with this meeting with cordial comments. Because if I'm going to keep on being attacked, I'm going to defend myself. For him to go there publicly to make that statement is incorrect. And you know that's the fact. We all worked together behind the scenes. You know, we accommodated all board members and made sure that every five of us get the proper treatment. And for him to sit there to say that, well, if there's no three votes, how can we get three votes when we don't even have the information? Again, let's go back. My concern and my gripe is that we were not part of the process from start to end. That's it. So if we are not part of that start to end, and then he said, you don't have three votes? How can we when we don't know what's going on? Is that simple? So the logic doesn't make sense. And for him to go, they're sitting there blabbing, blabbing, and I'm like, sounds good, sounds right. But the logic isn't there, the reason isn't there, the fairness, you know, the benevolence of it is not there.
Okay, we, we talked about our differences within the process, uh, whether you just want to talk about the process for brother this year or the process from three years ago. Um, did you have some questions or statements?
Uh, excuse me, I'm a junior board member. Our last, the last time was, well, they did the one in the morning. Our staffs lived here and presented very thoroughly the, the need for adequate space. And so I think they did a tremendous job. The last, I know many, many folks left, I get it, twelve AM and many folks departed. But if you go back and watch that video, every department came up here and shared the, their professional opinion, by the way, these are professionals. Professional opinion as to why they did the space, the justification, the role, the staffing. Uh, I thought they laid out the need very well. And I appreciate the fact that, again, I understand there's an increase in cost, but I appreciate the fact, obviously, the distance learning academy is added, the family resource center is added that has been researched now for years. I, I remember those board meetings where we talked about the family resource center. I remember the surveys that went out. I remember you visiting other school districts and getting data and trying to figure out services and programs that would go into that space. And I also remember at the last board meeting, there was a presentation that had data that showed fortunately, our services have increased. The needs of our families have increased, that we've seen an uptick year over year for these critical services for our students and families. And so I'm glad that that is part of this design. And I'm glad that it seems, again, accommodate the future growth of this district. I think good governance is planning for the future of this district. Uh, so those are just my comments. I, I understand the design was set out last time. We had a talk to review it. President Chapman, I know we requested board members to send any feedback. And did you get any feedback on the district office or questions or comments? No feedback or questions or comments when we all voted to send it in by that deadline of last Friday, two several weeks ago. I've been on district office.
President Chapman, I believe the forward is Dr. Mihara.
For the district?
No desire to change the question for district office. No questions were submitted for the school, questions were submitted for district office, which is what we're going through.
But we can also wait to request during the meeting, so we don't need to have a deadline as for, we don't need to dictate that. Because what we didn't put in, while we're seeing, if you see online notes here, is I got a chance to go over it because I can. And I want to submit that because it'll give off the ideas, I just want to clear what everyone else have to say first so that, you know, I don't, you know, double everything. Uh, but, you know, we all put in our comments and now we have some that we can discuss, you know, in person as well.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I appreciate the space that we had to discuss this in person. Uh, when the last board was, to take what I have, certainly could be questions answered in advance, concerns of the design for the district office, et cetera. So we, we had the materials, we had the opportunity to chime in, uh, several weeks now since that last meeting, to, to come prepare, uh, to be able to have a full discussion on this. So I, I'm just saying that I appreciate the space that we're having and I appreciate the time, and we had extended period of time. Be able to look over the designs, ask questions as necessary. Uh, myself personally, I don't have any personal preference in this because I'm not going to be the one here working the in and out. Uh, you know, I, I define that those board offices were multi-use or overflow on days that the staff might need to use them. I'm not sure. I'm just saying that I don't have any personal sort of wants, except for the wants of our staff. Because they're the professionals that ensure the services that we're delivering to the campuses, to the classrooms are high quality. So if they're able to do what they're doing now by sharing cubicles, renting space at Westman, I just learned, I just heard from a teacher today who said that they had to find space at Westman to work on curriculum updates because there was no space at the current office. So imagine what our staff could do with adequate space and efficiency to deliver the best service to our students and our families. Imagine what they can be capable of. It's the same argument I would make for our students who are in subpar, you know, buildings and people, like our, our CEA kids or lighthouse kids. Imagine what those kids could accomplish if they could walk into a space that was an inspiring environment to learn in. That actually felt like, you know, that they wanted to, that were inspired, they want to come to school and do well. And so it's all connected. Um, so anyway, those are my thoughts on the new building and the feedback.
All right, I'm just going to say that, kind of hit, I know there's probably like a few more things on that sheet. I would say we'll just go ahead and if there's additional questions, we can get those up here. Sure. Um, I'll just go ahead and do that now. I'll take a five minutes, thank you everybody.
I'll take a five minute recess. Thank you everybody.
There's a new weapon on the market.
Yeah, it's so powerful, can take out more than one person at the same time, and you never have to reload.
It can give us security.
I heard it was so small that it can fit in your pocket. No way my parents will find out about this.
I heard it could strike at the touch of a button.
Report, don't repost.
Stop social media threats now.
It's never a joke.
The benefits of unified sports are social participation and the exposure to new activities, things that they might not have had otherwise had opportunities to participate in.
When we build our equipment and our kids who can't typically participate are able to do something independently, the joy that they get from doing that activity for the first time is incredible.
I didn't really like playing in front of people in the beginning because I thought I wasn't good at it. And then once I got used to playing in front of people, I got a little bit out of my shell. And now I'm comfortable playing with other people.
I learned that I need to be confident.
Confident.
Oh, you want to be more confident? You learned to be more confident?
Special Olympics has had such an impact on the Arizona community as a whole because we are really focused on community for all. It doesn't matter what kind of situation you're in, what is your disability. We are really here for everybody, making life happen for everybody, making fun happen for everybody. Because sports are fun.
We've been playing like different kinds of sports, like volleyball. And we played this one game is called that. We were these, we were these like youth ones, stuff like that. Like we don't have the ball to stop, and we'd throw it to our teammate. Now we just actually legit play Batman Day. We started training, been training super hard that day.
Funnest, most happiest people I've ever seen in my life. It's just, every day is just, they have that positivity that can spread everywhere, like it's contagious.
Unified sports benefits students with and without disabilities in just so many ways. You see them come into the class at the beginning of the year and they're very shy, not very aware of how to act or behave. And then you just see these relationships blossom and then grow. And they truly do become like a team. And they're super close, super tight. And our students really do show really great examples of this throughout competitions. It's really pushing, supporting those that do have disabilities and just having those friendships and building that support and having that support for one another.
I really, I really enjoyed dancing because I learned that when the first time I danced, I was shy. But then I realized that dancing can be not just about dancing. It can be about making memorable memories.
During these past few months of the year, when we started, I feel that the most memorable moment.
And we'll discuss that.
Thank you, President Chapman. So going back to the questions here that we received. The next question that we have here is, can you identify and quantify the top cost drivers responsible for the overall increase?
Well, I can start off by saying that the big jump again in the cost is a huge increase in scope. So there's a lot more square footage. And if we're comparing to the older, estimated is about 20% less expensive per square foot than what the original proposed.
Yeah, we're doing this, sorry, so original, I think, concept was about 36,000 square feet. Based on the district's needs, as expressed by staff, we are at 85,000 square feet. So it's more than double the square footage, but less than double the cost. So there is project savings per square foot for the current design.
And of course, and maybe Tyler, the next question that can fill with that is, which phrase experienced the largest cost increase?
So globally across all scopes, trade costs increased due to the size and square footage increasing for the project. So no specific trade partner or scope of work significantly increased in relationship to the previous concept of result.
Of course, the other question that could probably group with that is, were there any new requirements added by the district that contributed to the cost increase? And so we could talk a little bit about the resource center, the overall sort of growth of the DLA offices. The other question that we could probably group with that is, can you provide documentation outlining how these scope changes directly affect the cost? Since we're on the cause.
Let's just look and finish and get any questions after.
And to help answer that, Tyler? And so the question that was asked is, could we provide documentation outlining how these scope changes directly affect cost?
Yeah, I think that what we can provide is essentially the documents that we have here based on the, you know, the combination of the projects that were set to be placed in separate locations within the district, combining those all into one roof. I think saves significant dollars for the district, A, in land cost, utility cost being provided to each one of those spaces. And combining those utilities at two one location provides a significant cost savings for the, for the project. So I think it directly impacts a decrease in cost for, for the project itself.
And of course, with that, there was a question here that talked about comparative cost data or other benchmarking for similar school projects that were recently completed.
Yeah, I'll take that one. So yes, as part of our strategic process, you know, we pull benchmarking data from similar type projects that are similar building systems, outbuilt structure. We take those, that information, we aggregate together, and we compare with the current cost of our district office. And when you aggregate them, they all fall within that expected cost range, that we're seeing on a cost per square foot.
The next question we have here is, overall, what is the total square footage? And how much room in square footage is the future growth? So like I mentioned before, this office is about 85,000 square feet. Of that, approximately 17,000 square feet, which is roughly 20%, is allocated for future growth. And of course, that growth space is located and distributed throughout the building for areas of collaboration, storage, and of course, within each department as well. And the intent with that was to be able to just prevent overcrowding and help support our staff over the next 10 to 15 years. And Rida, I believe you're maybe, yeah. So as highlighted in red here, we accounted for growth, so the red is shown.
In the presentation you received before shows the future growth. And as Prager mentioned, it's distributed equally throughout all the departments. And this, the information was generated from direct interaction with the stakeholders of each department as to what their long-term needs would be.
Thank you, Rida. With that, there is also a question here related to the kitchenette and the HR area. And Rida, if you could please maybe show the axon metric to the HR. I know that we have Stacy here who could help. I think, yes. And really, just to clarify, the kitchenette that you may be referencing there is really just a coffee location, just small, you know, refrigerator. Stacy could you talk a little bit further about that?
Yeah, so I don't know that it's much different than what we have now. I would actually call it more of a workspace than a kitchenette. I think the only difference is that there's a sink that is there in the new building that's not there currently. But the countertop we utilize for when we do our job fairs and create bags and create folders, and that is a workspace for us. Where our current building is now, I do have access to a sink close by. In the new building, I would not have an ass close by. But if the sink is an issue, then I take the sink. But I do ask that the counter space stay because it's a workstation for us more so than a kitchenette, if you will. So I love the idea of the sink because it's close. But again, if it's sink is an issue, the counter space absolutely is needed for our scope of work.
We'd like to mention, we also put the sink there because you have the two conference rooms. And just to be able to have a sink close in case you need it accommodated for any kind of food service or something, figuring it could be a double space.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Stacy. So the remainder of the questions here are related to the family resource center. And so one of the questions here that was asked. Thank you. Maybe the axon metric, yeah, that's a good one, and thanks, Rida. So the question that was asked is, how many square feet is the family resource center and what is the cost total? So the family resource center is approximately just 11,000 square feet. And so just taking the cost per foot, we approximate that it is about $8.5 million. The other additional questions that we have on the family resource center is, why do you have a demo kitchen? Why is there a library tutoring area? And why is there a computer lab for the resource center? And to help kind of answer that, I know we have Dr. Rosalba and Alex here.
Yeah, so the demo kitchen in the resource center is really going to serve as a multipurpose space. This was an idea that came from our stakeholder feedback that we gathered. It came from actually students. Some of the students expressed that they would love to have an opportunity to cook with their families, but they don't know how. And so they brought up the idea of healthy cooking lessons and then also learning the basic cooking skills specifically for students that are home alone in the evenings. And then it's really a multipurpose space that we'll use for other activities. Currently, we host like a fast food firebrand night, which require a kitchen area, painting coffee nights, craft events. Last year, the year before, we had a drum kit event where we hosted families, about 30 families. And due to space being limited, we were in room A148, which is in the front of the border, or I'm sorry, front of the district office and comfortably maybe accommodates about 15 people. We had to kind of make a deal with the tables were in a huge shape. And so we had families sitting on the inside. On the outside, our instructor wasn't able to stand up front to instruct, and so they had to go around. And so a space like this would really allow us to have parent engagement events and really serve as a space to teach real life skills and make it more interactive for families.
Yeah, and as Alex mentioned, so the demo kitchen will be multi-use. And we really want to promote healthy lifestyles, providing also those workshops for our families on how to make those dishes that are healthy. And we hope we can also have a little garden too there that we can also use those vegetables and things that we plan to actually use them in our cooking classes. But just a little bit of reminder that we did get the feedback from the stakeholder. Once we shared this idea with the board members about a couple years ago, we got the green light. So we began getting the stakeholder from our students, from our families, from our community. We created that committee where we were able to hear from them. So as Alex mentioned, that demo kitchen came from that. Also, the library, the library was also an ask from our students. So the library would also help our students go there and use those resources as well as any adult or community members that would like to go and just, you know, have that opportunity to recheck out some books. But also with the peer tutoring, we wanted to have a space for our students because that's what they asked. They wanted a space where perhaps they can't attend the after-school programs at their school site. Also with this family resource center, it's going to be extended hours. So it's going to be in the evenings and perhaps open also on the weekends. So having that opportunity for students to come during extended hours or weekend hours would always be, will also be valuable for them. Also, the computer lab, we wanted the computer lab from, this was from our students that asked that their family members, some of their family members are unable to navigate like the website. So they wanted some classes for their parents so they can learn how to get on the internet, how to use a computer. So we thought that was a great idea that we can provide those workshops for our families, but also workshops for our students as well. And it's an opportunity where they can go and use the computer. They have a printer there, they can work on resumes. So we would offer a variety of workshops there. So all these components really came and stemmed from the stakeholder feedback. And we really want the family resource center to be the heart of the district. We want this a place for our families to go there and know that they're gonna get those resources and services. And if there's a need for some workshops, that we'll be able to listen to their needs and provide those resources, as well as for our students too. We want this a place where they can go and have another safe space because we want our students to be safe. And when they have multiple opportunities in different locations, it's just going to be healthy for a whole community.
President Chapman, we wrap up the questions that we have received.
Yeah, so thank you for your presentation. Number Ortega Rivera, do you have any questions?
I don't, no questions at the time. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Number Ludenair? Number Ludenair?
Can you try again? We were having trouble with the character. Sure. This was tough, I'll say. No question, I did want to check on the family resource center again. What I'm hearing out of that presentation is this center is going to be really utilized for early intervention and prevention. You're talking about the ability to identify issues in the homes, challenges, potentially keep our kids safer. And when they're safe, they do better in the classroom. And in fact, they show up to school and they do well. I also see an opportunity, as you mentioned, increase access and equity, which is what we stand for, right? For all of our students. And then the real big piece of this is improved family engagement. We want more parents involved. You know when parents are involved, the kids will show up, attendance increases, academics go up. So I remember, again, you could work on this for years. Excuse me. So I understand the effort that was put into gathering carefully and intentionally the data needed to justify such a space for addition. And obviously, it's needed. I think about our McKinley Minto students, which estimate, how much do we have on any students? Roughly, I know it was presented the last night, 300 roughly, 300 McKinley Minto, the rest of us who are unhoused, who sleep on the couch, stay in friends' house, or elsewhere, we don't know about. And so this is another space, as you mentioned, that they can go to. Of course, there's spaces on campus, of course, there's resources. We have great multi-tiered support systems that are provided. And this is, this is a great anchor for those, our most vulnerable students and families. And so I just wanted to harp on that and about the family resource center. Other than that, I have no question for you.
Number seven?
Yeah, if you can go to the contract, you have that number to 127. Number four, five, six, seven, eight, and 10. There's some stipulation that something will be covered, will be extra. So that combined, like how much for that? So number four is fees from the city charged to look at approved plans. They're extra and not on this price. And then number five, paying for people to test and check the materials like concrete and steel. You know, like second opinion, that's extra, which, you know, we have to cover. It's not in the contract. Paying for people who test and check the, I'm sorry. If they find dangerous stuff like asbestos, but that won't be the case, it's just, you know, land. But like chemicals, maybe something in the ground, the pipes, that will be also, I mean, the cost to move and clean, that's not included in the contract. As well as things like, that's shit, but that's not relevant here. And then equipments that once we moved or installed, the cost of that as well. Just a summary from four to eight and then 10. What is the estimate cost for us out of? What is the estimate cost for us out pocket? Do you think that will be arranged and then specified?
So if we, if I can repeat back to what you asked, so we make sure we answer correctly. Within our GMP that was provided, you're asking the additional cost that would be incurred from line items four through eight as well as ten. Is that correct?
Yes.
Typically, most project plan review fees are not held with contractors. That's typically that we engage with, it's part of the soft, keeping soft costs that are associated with the project. Each city has its own pay scale in regards to development fees, et cetera. I'm not sure the deal that the city of Glendale has given to Tolleson. Sometimes those design fees and development costs can be zero based on how the relationship with the district is. I'm not sure what that is. And so I can't really give you a good indication of what those soft costs are going to be because I don't know how the city is going to partner with the district.
I mean, there's an estimate and they're like from Abingdon to Glendale to Tolleson. You know, they're usually probably within a thousand dollars. I'm just saying with those.
Yeah, great question.
I'm just curious, you know, behalf of the taxpayers, how much that would be incurred for us to pay, you know, out pocket? Just, you know, estimate.
Right, you know typically the percentage of projects.
Ten.
So we are dealing with the city of Abingdon, so there is a permitting process and there is a standard fee. So right now, the city of Abingdon.
Glendale.
I'm speaking. Oh, yes, I apologize. I was confusing with the high school district. I apologize. Yes, you are correct, the city of Glendale. And so with the city of Glendale, there are permitting fees associated with that through the review process, the pre-application process. And so right now, we are estimating about a thousand dollars in just those permitting processes.
Okay, and then number line item eleven, they are assuming they can use the water and electricity. That's already on some what they build. Is there, is it just land? There's no utilities or anything, right?
No, that's a, that's a great question. There are adjacencies that have power and water temporary, temporarily brought to the site. We do have to request permission, but we will access those.
Okay, if you see new hatchways, then you'll have that outright to do so.
Yes, we will use those services temporarily to perform the construction. And once we're done, we will disconnect services and we have those costs associated within our GMP.
And then number, line item number twelve, just curious, what is just in case? And what money would that be? Like, can you give an example of just in case? Because the only, like, we, you know, our contingency is not included, which is fine. But in case, you know, what could that possibly be? Being an ordinary guy used to working with contracts and builders, I mean, these languages are a little bit, you know, for me is like a little bit awkward. I'm not as smart as you guys with this area of expertise. So like, just an example of what just in case could be.
Okay, so I heard you ask one question twelve, contingency is not included. I'm not seeing where you're asking the just in case piece. Is it a different number? Am I misunderstanding?
No, 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 that's my interpretation of.
Oh, okay, I got it.
If you read the line item twelve, they're using these fancy words. I'm just keeping it simple for myself so I can comprehend. So I'm just calling it just in case and what example would that be? But you know, in your language, you know what line item twelve means. And then you can now interpret it as just in case, like the way I'm saying it, based on your vernacular, choice of words on that line item. Because I want the public to hear me, I want the public to hear you to explain these line items and what they are. So could you give an example?
Yes, ma'am. So each project, district, contractor, design partner team, they approach projects with different strategies. Contingency essentially are dollars that are set aside within the GMP for those just in case items that you're maybe referring to. The approach that we are taking as a team, based on the information we have, the design that we have, we are providing a contractor's contingency and a design contingency where city comments allows contingency for the project that total three percent each. Other districts, other projects choose to employ an owner's contingency that will allow the owner to focus on probably possibly purchasing furniture or adding scope to the project. Based on our collaboration and interaction as a team, we decided that the owner's contingency is something that is not needed on this project. And therefore, we are saying that it is, do not have it and it's the, that is the zero.
So is that a notion asked like from facility like Gabe? That there would be guys who know what owner contingency is, that three percent what it covers? How's that different from the other line items of four to eight and then ten? Because you're saying that's, you know, soft, you know, things versus, you know, this particular line item. Because what you use as an example did cover some of the line items from four to eight. Basically, I just want to know, you know, why we can't follow that.
Yes, so the choice to not have an owner's contingency, again, is the contingencies are the, how do you want to call it, things that may have been missed within design or items that are desired after design is complete, but don't want to go back and ask for additional funds. And so the owner's piece, they have asked for everything within the design. It has been put into the design and it has been great planning and interaction with the districts. All the wish list items and everything that they need is already currently in the design. So we're just stipulating, we're stating that, hey, we will not be providing an owner's contingency. However, we do have contractor's contingency and design contingency in case the city of Glendale says we need to do something different or we find those unknown soil conditions that we're talking about, response within the project to do with those.
So from our district, on previous building projects, what was the owner's contingency? Was it three percent?
On most of our projects, we would have a three percent owner's contingency. On this particular project, I don't intend to deviate from the design that's been shown to the board. So I don't need discretion to be able to change this project. What you're being presented here tonight is what we intend to go forward with. There is a contractor's contingency that is still on this project. And in the event that there is some unforeseen circumstance, that would be pulled from the contractor's contingency. And that would be something discussed at one of the contract meetings, infrastructure meetings, that they will have with our director of facilities, Mr. Gabe Martinez. And he would be signing off on like, yes, I can see why you would need to use contractor's contingency for that particular thing. So no, there's no owner's contingency in there. And I don't see a reason to need to deviate from what's being presented tonight and open up a building and have any kind of feedback of, well, that looks a little bit different than what was shown to us. It's going to look exactly like how it's shown to us.
So on the diagram of all the furnitures and accessories, that's all included? And because in this contract, it says furnitures are not included. And I think that's one of the line items here. So I.
Correct, the FFNE is not included because we are looking at what furniture we can move over from the existing district office since it's going to be remodeled for CEA. Some of our cubicle spaces, CEA is not intending to put students in cubicles when they move into the space. So a lot of that stuff, we are looking at repurposing and bringing over from the current district office to the new district office as opposed to buying all brand new furniture.
So we will be needing new furnitures?
It's not that we will not be needing any new furniture, but that is something that we will work out on our own with our team working directly with the furniture vendor. Will we determine how much furniture we're bringing over and how much furniture.
And how much do you think that would be? Because that would be considered not necessarily a contingency within the contract, but.
It would be a separate contract.
Right, so the separate contract, usually how much would that run?
Not until we assess what furniture we would be bringing over versus what.
Or just for comparison?
How much did we spend on furnishing a three hundred and twelve thousand square foot school?
What was the invoice?
It was probably about two to three million, but that's three hundred and twelve thousand square feet.
No, no, that's fine. What I'm trying to find out is that this contract covers, and then what doesn't cover, and how much furniture that's going to be. Is that simple math? It's not about, you know, what is this and what is that? Please do not direct the conversation. The goal is to find out exactly how much of these two hundred costs. And I need to know that. Let's go to number, okay, this is kind of. This is more of a technical question. I'm just curious because it says that number seventeen, under color, N and A to QA, there will be a concrete block of twenty feet by seven feet and two feet thick. And the part called is MF three and it can be four feet thick. And then item number eighteen, it says those listed columns will rest on that type of concrete. Again, what I'm reading is my interpretation of the line item. So if I'm wrong, just correct me because the words you guys are using are like big words that I don't understand. This is your industry and I'm just kind of like figuring it out myself. I'm just interpreting it in my own language. So again, if it's wrong, just kind of get away.
No, essentially, what we're dealing here and what we're dealing with and what we're detailing out here, we're just letting everybody know through conversation and written form, agreements between the architect, McCarthy, and the client on what specific pieces have to happen based on information that may not be in the drawings at the time. So all we're doing is clarifying the size of footings that we'll be putting in place to support the structure in item seventeen and eighteen.
Right, so sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. So I'm not concerned about the content of it, it's just the differentiation between MF three and FO four. What's the difference between those two?
Let's see, so those are the assuming MF three, that's a, yeah, it's the size of the footing, right? So on each structure, at each building, they indicate the different sizes of the footings to buy these classifications of numbers. What you have there is a concrete footing that's within the building itself. And we're just indicating that we're coming up with specific thickness to be associated with that call out.
So I understand that and each line has that differently. It's just that they're using MF three and FO four. So what's the difference between those two? Because I understand they are the equivalent, the size and everything. But then between those two metrics, size, shape, how are they different? And why went from MF three to FO four? So FO four is line eighteen and then MF three is seventeen. I mean, sixteen, seventeen, which is fine, like you get the description of the block, you know, twenty feet by seven feet, two feet thick. They went to FO four and there's no explanation. And I read through the contract and there's no, and then I looked at engineering information and I said, can't find it. So why is FO four?
Right, so footing number four is what that is. And it's specifically called out in the structural drawings, each design.
This is twelve footings, that's it?
It's, well, it's, no, it's a.
Let's plug to that.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
It just kind of, it kind of confused me, jumps in like this, it's like technical stuff.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I put my head around it because what I want to know is that the quality of these materials and the thickness of it, because that really determines the sounding and the grounding of it. Now, I can't compare it to, like, my design of the schematics, but the foundation is very critical. I know that, you know, with, you know, things set up and things like that. And that's where I was coming from. So if it's twelve feet, that should be suffice, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
The size of the square feet. And you guys already tested the ground in the, yeah, yeah, okay. You know, I think you guys might know what you guys are doing. On number line twenty-nine, what is AISC stands for? It's a certification. And who, who does the math?
Line twenty-four?
Twenty-nine, AISC certification.
That's a process of welding that is finishing of a weld for paint, right? It's essentially a certification that comes out of the state of California that is not necessarily applicable to the state of Arizona. And so if being called out on the drawings and the specification isn't relevant for how we're building the buildings, so we're just indicating that, hey, this piece is not part of it. The building is still structurally sound, it will be painted and erected the way that it needs to be. It's just a requirement that is found in Southern California and not in.
So California has more stringent, you know, statutes than Arizona, I'll give you that right now.
Yes, ma'am.
And then second, the AISC certification is fine that we don't have that and you guys are not abiding by it. But I am happy to say that you guys will still follow AISC and I just want to bring that to light. And we do appreciate that. You know, anything with a standard that is above and beyond, we appreciate. Let's go to line item thirty. It says no galvanized steel.
Galvanization is a process of putting a chemical on steel so you can see the steel in raw form without it rusting. And so the structural steel on this project has a coating on it, it's painted. We're just indicating that we'll not be using exposed steel with a galvanization process on it.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. And now to line item thirty-three. Is this, this line item, is this about the fire hazard safety? Because when I was reading it, it sounded like it, but then it kind of moved a little bit. And my interpretation is like a steel, a steel skis, like a cocky, I guess it.
Yeah, fire stopping is essentially a system that's put into the building. And it can be indicated in pretty much different ways. It could be fire cocking, as you're talking about. It also could be different fire rated assemblies, meaning multiple products that are installed to accomplish the need of the fire code within the building, right?
So I have to put that basically, if there's a fire and this can compartmentalize each room and not have oxygen leak and expand fire. So number thirty-four, sound blocking ceiling, so that kind of explains it from line thirty-three. So let's get that. Let's go to fifty-five. So here I'm thinking, like, maybe I'm reading this line twenty-two and can we use like glass solar panel C, line fifty-five?
Yes, ma'am. The exterior glass, as you're seeing here, we're just clarifying what is currently called for within the project. And it's just an indication of what is, what is being used.
It says exterior, so where would this be located?
Uh, I don't know. We would, we have the image.
Fifty-five. It's an exterior glass and it's coating, it's a coating protector from the sun spray. It's like a tinted window.
Yeah, so Miss Anne, you're just referencing to the window type that's going to be used for the overall project.
And then line number fifty-eight. It says level four finish, but you can, in some, will get level five. Why not all level five?
So level five is significantly more expensive than level four. Level five is the smoothest type of wall that you can put into place in regards to drywall. And to receive a graphic, drywall needs to be super smooth. And so this indication is just at the locations where we're going to have vinyl graphics or other types of graphics on the wall so that it adheres properly and doesn't fail. And so it would not be cost effective to have level five finishes across the entire building itself and just focus on the areas where it needs to have graphics applied to.
And then line item sixty-one, what is access floor? That's my interpretation from that line. And because the way it was describing, it's like, it's like an extra space. I mean, with AI and all the technology that we can pursue in the future, that space, we can use extra, you know, filings and, you know, what do you call it, those cable layers going through.
Yes.
But, and then what type of wire can be used in those spaces?
So the method of installation for the capeling within the MDF room of the district office is all aerial, it's laid on racks and then brought down to the termination points within the server room itself. It is not something that is run on the floor. An access floor essentially is a raised floor that. An access floor essentially is a raised floor that allows you to run cabling under it to operate your M D F room. Based on the, the needs and the desires of the district, uh, this is a savings in the way it's being installed. It's very much so cost effective and appropriate in its application. There were some conversations and indication that it was possible that we would have a raised floor here. So we're essentially saying that we're not doing that based on the needs of the district.
And then line item sixty-eight, it says, um, F, uh, each private office will get four by four whiteboards and a tack board, is that what the board only two?
Give me one second, I'm sorry.
Some of the specialties, number six, line item sixty-seven.
F R P, F R P is included at F R C laundry room and F R C eschewer along with these wall. Yes, so F R P is fiber to glass reinforced panels.
Oh, I'm so sorry, sixty-eight.
Sixty, okay.
I missed that.
Four by four marker boards and tack boards assumed in all private offices. The question is, are they in the board offices, the boardroom offices themselves? Is that your question?
Yes.
We can most certainly include them, Miss Anne, right now we have not accounted for whiteboard or tack board spaces.
And now to the window covering, line item seventy-one, a hundred forty-eight thousand dollars for roller shades? I thought the structure had the shade, having it indent it and then the windows tinted.
They are, but still, depending on how individuals like to work within their spaces, some folks like less light, some like more light, and this is an allowance. It doesn't mean that we have to spend this volume, but depending on what is selected and, uh, you know, the needs of the district itself, um, we have this bucket of money essentially to provide, uh, window coverings as needed.
And then you guys already mentioned about the outside sign of glow, the halo lighting, the exterior signs, at line item seventy-three.
Yep, the backlit lights and, uh, just want to make sure that branding is seen by the community and it's appropriate and very cost effective solution.
Line item seventy-four, one point five million, allowance for big digital outdoor signs, uh, you guys covered that. Uh, the fire protection, I think overall the fire protection is standard, right? Because I was comparing this with some other contracts, you know, doing corporate buildings, it seems standard in this contract.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, each building has one of these vertical pipes or sprinklers. Um, can you go into the M D F rooms and explain that? Because now we have tech rooms and I just want you guys to understand the tech room is also being protected. So the sprinkler doesn't go on for the light and smoke and then ruins all the equipment. How that different from the rest of the building?
Uh, so make sure I understand your question, I think the empty, what's, which line item?
Well, no, it's just under the fire protection, which is line item seventy-eight, all the way to, uh, one hundred. And one feature that stood out for me, I'm sorry, seventy-eight to eighty-five, um, is that when you have this sprinkler system, uh, is, it's calibrated or built for certain spaces like the I T, like, I don't want a smoke, a few to trigger that and just ruin all the equipments.
Absolutely.
And just to explain to the community how that is being differentiated with, under the, uh, fire protection.
Yes, a pre-action system allows the sprinkler system to operate in the building as needed. It is a safety precaution to protect the electronic equipment within the M D F space itself. And that's various expensive equipment. It is also the brain, the hub and, you know, the, the control center for the district. So it's something that needs to be protected and this system allows you to do that. So when, you know, the fire alarm goes off or something is stripped, that there are multiple operations that need to go into place before the sprinkler activates within that space. So it's a double precaution, if you will.
Thank you, and then the next section is the H VAC. I mean, just, uh, just for a note, the electricity, the sprinklers, I mean, they can all be adjusted based on the size of the district, right? If the square feet was to shrink, then the pricing will go down because there'll be less, uh, there'll be less sprinklers, there'll be less electricity, there'll be less protection, obviously.
Yes ma'am.
So these will all be proportionate, because you have the line items of how each thing's priced. Those are all proportionate, can be decreased based on the size of the district, whether you have district. Uh, line item eighty-seven, uh, kitchen uses homestyle appliances. They're not full restaurant here, they're not heavy duty restaurant, exhaust hood, grease stoves or special equipment. So the kitchen that I saw in the design and that was explained, it was more for healthy cooking, wasn't like a mass production, it was just fit for the community that had. What would be the number of people, uh, that this kitchen can serve?
I think this, so when you started getting into commercial equipment and our indication of not being able to, not providing it is because once we start going into commercial style equipment, it requires fumes and requires different fire code, um, uh, pertinences to be put in place. And so, for the, to meet code, we would have to put in different equipment, like a, a fire suppression system that operates off of chemicals instead of water, as well as extensive fumed exhaust hoods. And so to avoid those costs and just the volume of what's going to be cooked, those things that are not needed. And so the residential equipment, uh, depending on the quantity, I'm not sure how many, uh, instructors or trainers in there. I'm saying, okay, there's one. So based on the needs and the classes, that can support the quantity of people that are in there. I'm not sure the volume or the programs that they're going to be implementing with it, uh, but it should be a sufficient size based on the use. Can you indicate it?
Okay, um. This is Miss Anne, I'm looking at the plumbing. Line item one hundred and ten, uh, just no access panels included. Um, just as H VAC mentioned, it needs to scale down, uh, that number depends on the front of the lines.
I understand this one myself, Miss Anne.
See, I'm telling you, to get to translate them from the contract, it's, it's a nightmare.
Okay, so access panels for plumbing are typically put into drywall, um, ceilings and what we're seeing mostly within the project where plumbing is run, those are in removable drop ceilings and so access panels are not needed for, for plumbing in, in the ceilings.
Okay, it, it's just a one, there's something else that's in the door, so.
Yep, that's the first thing I looked at was one.
So why aren't we using copper for our electrical feeds? I mean, the wires are a hundred amps and up, um. I mean, with the size of it, um, the flow of electricity going through the building, especially when it's open to a couple of, and the use of it, it will really, um. I know copper's expensive, I know that.
Very much so. So, um, sorry, were you able to finish your, your question? Uh, the, uh, copper is, it's extremely more expensive than aluminum. Um, there is some, uh, drop in the capacity of the electricity across the wires. Um, however, it does meet code and it is a cost saving alternative that is taking on a reg, taken on a regular basis and then the wires still function to meet code and provide the sufficient amount of electricity, uh, to the district and the, and the needs that it will have.
I think my concern is that the copper is such an ideal conductor for electricity. Uh, can it be placed partially, especially in the initial, you know, output? And also it does save us electricity a lot because, you know, it conducts well than to not have it, I know it's not expensive. But in the long run, it does save you electricity, so these are shown as, you know, substantial at the time, especially at this magnitude.
Right, I believe the, the, the entire building is wired in copper. And so what we're talking about aluminum is wires that are fed from the transformer to the S E S, which is a service conference section. Um, and so those are, uh, wires that are before your meter, right? So the district isn't necessarily paying the cost of the transmission through that. It's the use of what's in the building, which is being operated on copper. Uh, so it's the bigger transmission lines that does provide significant savings, but what's happening within the building is all operating on copper.
Okay, so the transformer and the, uh, initial, um, gap room as well, is not copper? Uh, if it was to be, how much copper would it guys look in?
I can give back to you one.
No, that's not, I'm glad that you clarified that the rest of the building is copper.
Yes, yes ma'am.
There's no big difference. So let's go to the E V charger, um, you know, I might see that number after that was going to be located. Um, how many will there be, uh, state power stations? I was, do you have to?
Can you tell me which one I got reading up, I'm sorry?
Since, um, E V chargers, there's one.
All right, for those of you that don't have the question, E V charger for mission install is not included or not in contract, we have included for the pathway step in parking spaces closest to S E S location.
And to clarify, Miss Anne, we have two, two stations for future. Okay, and then line item one fifteen, what does E R R C S system? And why is that unknown? It's a radio system for emergency responders. Is line item one fifteen, so again, it says E R R C S system is unknown.
Yes ma'am.
They will pay, they will pay to test it later, uh, but would be fully, it will be fully built. So once it's built, then you can test ourselves, is that what you're saying?
Uh, no ma'am, so, uh, yeah, partially. Um, pardon, remind me what that acronym means. So what that is, is, uh, fire life safety or some of the fire department. Um, in a lot of the buildings that we find because of the steel, the windows, the concrete within the building, uh, their handheld radios cannot communicate with one another. And what this system is essentially is an antenna or a repeater within the building that allows access from radio to radio. Um, the determination of whether or not this is needed has to be tested after the building is built. So once the building is construction, is constructed, the fire department will walk through the building and perform a test. Um, there isn't really a process to tell of whether or not it is needed prior to that test and so we have to indicate that it's unknown at this time because you're not sure if the fire department's going to require us to put it in.
Okay, and then one twenty, seven hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred, allowance for upgraded lighting.
Line item, I'm sorry.
One twenty.
One twenty.
So that's not part of the budget?
It is part of the budget.
Okay, and you guys are just wanting to add here?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, these I can see all of the. So one twenty-two, we pay for the generator fuel for testing startup. Filling the generator at first, fuel it during testing is first, it's on us, one twenty-two.
Uh, yes, upon installation of the generator, we will fill it, we will fuel it, we will test it and we will, we will take the gas.
It says filling the generator at first and fuel used, used during testing is our responsibility.
Initial generator fuel, fuel consumed during testing, yeah, we can do that.
You guys will take care of that?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, on all, over a hundred, we cover this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any consistence to security in the structure cabling? Okay, just a bit. Uh, plumbing, we've covered that. And then to the last page, last four line items, what is one line, line one twenty-eight, uh, five forty-two U open racks and data rooms? Uh, these are like, like, I guess those tall racks that hold network leaders in place and was M D F and was I D F?
M D F is a main distribution frame and then I D F is an intermediate distribution. Um, and so the main service comes within, like, a service from Cox or, um, it comes into the main and it goes into that room and from there it distributes to the I D Fs and the I D Fs provide, uh, the wide, uh, internet to each of the floors and offices.
Okay, and then, um. I think the rest will be for the I T to ask, but I'll leave them in the building this time because, I mean, I, I kind of have an idea, but I don't need to know. I think, I think I T can take care of it on this panel.
Yes ma'am.
That would be, that would be all from me with these questions and thank you so much for being clear and clarifying all the line items.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Perpleson? Yep, so a few brief questions here. Uh, Dr. Walling, back to the Family Resource Center and I want to just talk about usability. Can you just share, uh, what type of resources we provide to our transportation resources for our house students and folks and students who might have trouble getting to the center and how we're going to support them?
For the transportation services?
Yes.
Um, so right now we haven't really talked about transportation. Um, I know that this, that might also be in, uh, a challenge for us as well. So we can have those discussions with, um, transportation team to see how we can, um, help and support our families and students to get to the Family Resource Center.
So for all of our McKinney-Vento students, they do qualify for the extracurricular support, so we would be able to use the vans we would use now to transport those students home. We'd be able to transport them over to the Family Resource Center. And as you see, there's a teen area in there in addition to the, the library and, and the computer lab, so we have plenty of things for them to do once, once they would have arrived there.
Awesome, so again, just reiterate, almost one of those students will have transportation via our vans, but not to and from the center or to wherever else they might need to go in terms of where they're staying?
Yes, we could, we could take them to and from the school to the center and then from the center to where they are staying, where we would normally transport them. We'll be able to use the vans to do that transport.
Awesome, and we'll just stick with you, superintendent. Uh, again, can you just reiterate the budget that's allotted for this, this office can only be spent on?
Administrative.
Administrative.
Yeah, so we have two projects aligned in that bond, two administrative projects. One was the facilities warehouse, which we have now completed and then, and then the rest was to be used for this district office. And so if we did not spend it on, on this, we don't really have another driving administrative need that we would be able to spend, spend the funds on.
So this was, uh, over for warehouse and from district office in terms of admin usages? This is for corporate use of those dollars?
Yes, in the bond pamphlet, it outlined a hundred and twelve million dollars to be used for administrative expenses.
And for those who have concerns, if this negatively impact the current needs of our students and staff, you would say?
I, I'd say it's overwhelmingly going to support the needs of our students and staff. Um, you know, some of the examples that were given earlier about how we have to, and I believe you shared, Mr. Perpleson, about how some of our staff has to go and use Westmeck's facilities, uh, which we're going to be neighboring with now with Westmeck, but they have to go to use Westmeck's facilities to be able to have sufficient meeting space when you're, when they're trying to work on a brick wall. Well, now not only will we have sufficient space, but our partner, Westmeck, is literally right across the parking lot.
Thank you, I, I like including the questions. And just for the last comments, I want to just reiterate, thank, thank our staff for coming in and sharing their need uh, for the usage of, of expanding our district office. Um, they are the professionals that are there day in, day out. Uh, and I would say that about all of our staff, they're all professional, some of the best workers in the entire state. And it's evident by the data that was presented at the marathon meeting we had, the last marathon meeting we had, the first item, we should talk about the data and the growth in academic achievement. We've hit feats that this district has never seen before. So I attribute that to our staff, all staff, you know, all staff have a piece of, of that success. And so when it comes to their feedback on usage, usability, I trust them. I trust the professionals because they know what they're doing. I'm not a N I T, I don't know what the needs are, I'm not a human resources, I don't know what the needs are. Certainly don't work in a family resource center, I don't know exactly what those needs are. But when they present data, I have no reason not to believe the data is being presented. I'll ask my questions for clarity, but I trust our staff because it's showing that data we have effectiveness of student achievement. And then another point on this, and I don't want to further delay, our White House kids. And then another point on this, and I don't want to further delay our White House kids, our continuing education academy kids and staff who need an adequate space. We've been talking about this for a while. They need an adequate space to achieve the excellence that they're currently achieving. So I, I, I cannot further delay that. And so I understand the plan is to have them go into our old spot in the current district office. And lastly, I just wanna thank our vendor partners. You guys have been extremely professional this evening and thorough, very professional and thorough. You answered every question that I've heard and answered my questions very thoroughly. If I had to trust some of the taxpayers that do these projects, I feel comfortable with you all leading the way because it's evident you're true experts in your field. And that's what we wanna hear. Uh, and so thank you for your patience and expertise in guiding us through this process.
So my final question about the?
One question. There's one question. I don't have a chance to ask any more questions, so.
Uh, just to piggyback on the um, bonds for this, you know, district office. The bond that was passed on in twenty twenty-four, the language in there, you know, proposed uh, use for the bond proceeds, the breakdown was ninety percent of the bond was to go earmarked for the school base used. Uh, for improvement maintenance, that's the campuses. And then ten percent was for transportation in district office. And six percent was transportation, that leaves four percent for the district office. Now, the only way for us to come up with sixty-five million dollars for the district office would be uh, prior bond authorization savings. And also maybe possibly adjunct ways of repair of those and that we have leftovers. Classroom site funds, uh, also from property loan money. Could it be the MNO over-ized spillage savings? There's the impact of ECS, the federal ESSER that can carry over if it's still allowed. And then we have the capital outlay, the DAA, but that's not really substantial. Nor the insurance proceed if it's even applicable. And then on lease, leaseback, if we have any others, this is Isaac deal, uh, that is allowed on construction bond. Okay, he has no. So where did?
So the twenty twenty-four bond, not the twenty twenty-three. The twenty twenty-four bond has a hundred and twelve million for administrative expenses. We went and it's ninety percent administrative. And then the other two categories got split between transportation and school base. What you're looking at, what you're reciting from is the twenty twenty-three bond. And it's also the twenty twenty-three bond was more similar to past bond issuances where it was predominantly the school space. But the twenty twenty-four bond is ninety percent administrative expenses. One hundred and twelve million is on the administrative line. So I mean, if you want us to try to Google for our pamphlet, we can pull our pamphlet up to show it. But it's a hundred and twelve million on administrative expense.
If it's a hundred and twelve that was issued in the twenty twenty, um, three bond election?
No, twenty twenty-four bond is all administrative. It's ninety percent administrative, a hundred and twelve million.
So if that was for the administrative, meaning the district office?
Yes, in the warehouse.
How much was the warehouse?
About eighteen, nineteen million. I think Gabe's still hanging out about there, eighteen, nineteen, hit, around eighteen, nineteen million.
Alright, um, yeah, uh, thank you for the time, guys. Oh, yeah, alright.
I'm ready.
Okay. Well, it's getting me that like a ton of questions I haven't got to address everything I have to ask.
Well, you told me I couldn't go ahead.
Well, I asked, I didn't like you do one question, I was turned over again, but.
You don't dictate how many questions I can ask, it's not really.
This is my turn.
Well, you know what, if you got, let's try, I gave you the option to do so and then you turn it down like me. So you don't get to say one, two, or three questions. I'm just gonna have leading questions so that.
So I just wanted to say, uh, thank you everybody that was.
I'm not done asking the question. I'm not done asking the question. Uh, it's very disrespectful. And I'd like to finish asking the questions for the public.
So my question.
So I just want to clarify the bonds for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we can get the language. I'm not done with my question. But you don't get to decide how long we get to talk.
I didn't decide that.
No, we're not done talking about the different change of. He just told me that twenty twenty-four is for the twenty twenty-three that I just said, correct?
No, twenty twenty-four has one hundred and twelve million dollars for administrative expenses. It can only be spent on administrative expenses.
No, I'm saying that what I said is from twenty twenty-three.
Yes, so that was the wrong comment.
Clarify, because I wanna make sure that we can get the language, can pull the language from the election of twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
Yes, you can look at the, if you have a laptop in front of you, pull it up on Google right now and pull up the pamphlet.
Okay, so that pamphlet, I don't know if I, this is what the language was written for twenty twenty-four. So if I am mistaken, my, and that's what I'm trying to clarify so that we're all on the same page. And I wanna know how much money left within the district's office. But if you don't want me to know that?
I mean, we did go through like the great remaining amount of bond.
Well, I'm slower, okay, I just need more information.
No, that's fine.
If it isn't, then let me talk and let me finish, you know, you're so rude and interrupting me.
About ninety-four million still left to spend on the district office and other administrative expense.
Uh, you know, I just wanted to say thank you to all our staff who had a lot of input into this. Uh, this is all your workspace, as I'm not sure if any of y'all stuck around. But uh, thank you for putting together this conference. And I think it's not only gonna support the work that you all do every day and support the work of our um, teachers and staff at the sites and our students. Um, I appreciate the stakeholder groups that we put together, the time that went into this. Um, we've talked at length about the amount of time and community input that we got for the family resource center, um, the possibilities with it, um, the expanded space for DLA, which is currently operating out of portals that were supposed to be demolished five, six years ago, I believe. Uh, portals over there when I was a student that were very old when I was a student, um, that we shouldn't be having people work in anymore. Um, so this is gonna provide a futuristic space that's gonna support, uh, continue to support the academic growth that we are seeing in our district. So, um, I just wanna thank everybody that was at fault of this. Um, and I wanna thank our architect and the GC team for, uh, working with our, our staff, uh, working with our teams to put this together. Um, I think a lot of work went into this, um, and I think a lot of, I think a lot of great things are gonna come out of supporting this. Uh, just in the trajectory that we've had, I think this is just gonna continue to improve that. So, um, thank you all for.
I'd like to request from the architect to have another draft of, of a smaller district office and potentially, you know, building back to the tall some district, uh, location.
So thank you for jumping along stuff. Um, so just to say thank you all again. Um, since it is nine twenty, I'm going to close the work study session. Um, call to open a special meeting. Um, would you do the roll call for attendance here? It's good, okay. Uh, so, uh, member of the dinner area, are you present?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Uh, member of the take over there?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Uh, member or take over there?
No question, thank you.
So, I just, I love that record of like that, uh, everybody is still present. Uh, can I get a motion or I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda, do I have a second? Alright, uh, so the motion is to approve the regular agenda. Um, vice president, Bill Posel.
Yes.
Member Sir. Member Miguel, take over there?
Yeah.
I was, real quick, uh, Mr. Ortega, was that a yes?
No.
Yeah, I was calling for Miguel.
Okay, so I, I, my vote was no on the regular agenda.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Ortega, over there?
Yeah.
So that motion passes for one. Alright, uh, now we have our discussion, uh, consideration to approve the GMP for construction manager at risk. Uh, just to move the conversation along, I'll make a motion to approve the GMP, do I have a second?
Second.
Right, uh, any conversation on the motion?
I'm sorry, what, what's the motion?
Uh, to approve the GMP as presented.
Are we gonna, um, have a discussion about it?
Yeah, yeah, I was opening up for conversation.
So the discussion is after?
You can discuss the, oh, sorry, you can discuss the motion that's on the floor, yes. Maybe it's basically the same conversation.
I can't really hear. Are we having a discussion now, ma'am? Because I have, I have a separate motion for the, um, for, um, you know, just to, to have a, um, I, I have a different motion, you know, to, to approve. I'm, I'm not sure when that's appropriate, I just can't hear.
Are you sort of asking to approve the GMP?
Um, I, my motion was, um, separate, I think right now we're trying to do that.
Yes, it would be important.
So what?
What's that? My motion is, um, I, I think that, you know, the, you know, the, the district office has a lot of perks and I appreciate, um, you know, department leaders being able to share their experience with the current district office. But I would also like to, uh, hear what, uh, parents and students have to say. I know the new district office plan has a community center, which I think is great. But I think that accessibility to that, um, might, we might need to do more research. So my motion is to table, uh, the current approval, um, till late January, send out a survey to students and parents. And just get their input if this is something that they would, um, take advantage of. Because, you know, obviously, you know, a lot of people talk about, um, grades and test scores. And I think that if, you know, we're gonna offer these services, it's important for students and parents to find them accessible. So that is my motion, um, and yeah.
Second? I'd like to second your motion?
Uh, so there's already a motion on the floor for the approval. Um, and then, that's fine, well, I was opening up for a discussion. Um, to some of your points on there, again, for the resource center at least, like, that's, the way it's designed was based directly on feedback from community members, from students. Um, I don't remember how many, um, different community forums, uh, that, that happened for that and surveys. But, um, the resource center was put together, um, directly from that feedback. If that helps answer your question, at least on the, the resource center.
Now, since you're telling quite a word, I never, I'm a parent in the district and I did not receive a survey about the community center nor did I receive any invitation, um, specifically as a parent to the, um, community forum. I know there was a group put together, um, with the district office to discuss the means and the design. But as a parent, I never had, um, an invitation to either attend a forum, um, once the, the design, or once the, um, project was approved, nor did I ever receive a survey as a parent, um, on the resource center.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on that because I went to, uh, our community center in our community. And, and they said they didn't hear anything about it. They have kids, uh, that goes to various campuses. And I was very alarmed, I said, well, I don't know how that is, I can't find out. So we would like to have it more of a, uh, you know, organic holistic, you know, top to bottom across all campuses, all of the, you know, students, fourteen thousand students in the family to participate, either read a survey or do a person. Uh, but it's really, really important to, uh, get the feedbacks from the community and its residents. And I know there's a motion on the table, so let's vote on that and then we'll move to the second motion if the first motion fails. So can we just go?
No, I have to, just like you shared your comments and everyone shared their comments, I'd like to share mine politely and respectfully. Um, it's a shame that this concern about feedback wasn't brought up two, three weeks ago. We could have deployed a survey, we could have done research. Every board member had the opportunity to raise these concerns weeks ago. And not one board member said, let's have a survey, let's, let's, let's reach out. It's on us as board members, individual accountability as leaders to be able to bring those things forward. Uh, we all knew that this meeting was happening tonight, we knew that there was an act item. Um, and so for me personally speaking, again, just as an individual board member, I'm concerned about the increase in cost by further delaying the project with the way the economy is going, tariffs, this current administration, the cost of steel, the cost of labor. And more importantly, delayed services potentially pushing down, kicking the football, if you will, down the line on delayed services for families and students in our community. That's my only concern. I'm not anti-outreach, I love that. I wish that it would have been brought forward several weeks ago when I felt that every, every, it wasn't afforded, every board member was afforded the opportunity to move that forward. Now we're sitting here in the final hour, getting ready to cook the football once again. Uh, which, again, I'm concerned about the, the increased cost and the delay, the delay in services to kids, which the students should always be at the center of the conversation. The students should always be the center of the conversation. And so that's what I'm thinking about, when you think about services and, and, and facilities and our staff being able to efficiently and adequately deliver those top-tier services for our students.
Now, I just want to piggyback on that and absolutely in accordance to supporting the students. That is the foremost importance. But what's even more important is to have the elected officials among the five board members to be notified and understanding, uh, the procedures. I myself did not know that two weeks ago that I can ask for a public input, a survey, because, you know, the meeting was eight hours long and our brain was motioned how, or we was to know that before this, you know, study group, that we can request that retrospect, hindsight, and remove board members that have a different opinion. And that we need to now, moving forward, to be more, uh, you know, collective in information on what is available, what we can do as individual boards to bring up concerns. I mean, it's unfortunate, you know, we're gonna disagree and among board members, we're not always gonna be on the same page. But what's really important, what's really important to make sure that the best of the board down to which whoever, that we are all on the same line of receiving proper communication and information in a timely manner. When that doesn't happen, you will have board members that want to feel confused and hesitant and cautious moving forward. And that's what's happening now. I'm not saying that, you know, you're wrong and I'm right or vice versa. It's that we're gonna come from a different angle that we need to respect to make sure that every board member has an input and that they have an opportunity because they did not know they had this opportunity. You being here for twelve years, you being here for eighteen years, you guys know, we don't. I'm just been here for less than a year. I'm like literally trying to keep up with the, you know, with the big boys here, literally. And we're just trying to, trying to say, hey, don't we get a voice? Just because we are the new board members doesn't mean that we don't get to have our input. So with this information that we were proceeding and with the motion that's on the table, and then there's another motion.
What do you want, what kind of feedback do you want on the IT office? And what feedback do you want on the HR office? What feedback do you want on the business service office?
So here's the thing about feedbacks, is that we need to have another gathering with the five board members in this special, special session to discuss this, to, to iron this out. We're not gonna throw this to the district office for them to figure out. We need to know so that Miguel, Luna, myself, you, John, I mean Devon can say, hey, this is the survey, these are the questions, that we can work together to come up with a survey that we will represent.
That doesn't answer my question. Aside from the community resource center, what feedback on the departments are you asking for from the? what feedback on the departments are you asking for from the community? I would like to know specifically what you're looking for.
For me, the community needs to know every aspect. Just because, just because these offices are for certain department doesn't mean they have the right of way of exclusivity. That's the problem that I have is that the input has to come from the board and with the community survey. How do they feel about spending sixty-five million dollars with this kind of a layout? If they're gone whole for like, yes, we want to support our district office, we want to support our staff and we want them and us to approve this sixty-five million dollars layout blueprint that we had no involvement in. So we're slowing it down so that we can.
This is about two agendas, so there's not been no involvement first at all?
Well, two agenda for you may be fine, when we didn't give any information in between. So from.
Did you ask for information?
Well, the thing is I didn't assume it blew up to sixty-five million. I just knew it was like twenty million. That's where I started off and that's last time I gave the information.
I never heard a twenty million dollar amount.
Well, that's what I heard from the superintendent.
I've never heard a twenty million dollar amount.
Yes, you did. I said, you told in front of, you told in front of Tyler. Tyler was there when I asked you and you said it was twenty million.
That was the third. We said, well, off of Ben's estimate, it was thirty was what we were looking for.
No, you said twenty. Tyler was there. I asked you.
Never said twenty. I said thirty. Tyler, did you ever hear me say the number twenty? Yes, it's only been a third.
No.
What you heard versus what I said. I know what I said.
You can tell me what you heard, but I'm telling you what I said. And what I said was thirty because thirty was the estimate we got from the previous architect
when it was a thirty-six thousand square foot building.
When I was asking about.
And we also had an estimate for the family resource center and for DLA and all those are now combined into one building.
You said it was starting at twenty million and then I added, so why can't we increase it to make it more sustainable?
Okay, you, you can't tell me what I said. I'm the one who said. You can tell me what you heard, but you can't tell me what I said. I know what I said. I said thirty because it's always been thirty. It's been thirty years before you even considered going for this more than ever we were working off was thirty. So I know what I said because I've said it in multiple meetings. It's been thirty for several years now. The estimate's been thirty.
You told me twenty million and I said, and I had to correct you.
I never said twenty million.
Well, that's what I heard, so I, I understand we're not gonna agree on this, so stop interrupting me. You told me it was twenty million.
I did not tell you. You can tell me what you heard, but not tell me what I said. What I said was thirty.
I'm telling you that I've heard you tell me twenty million.
So I've still not heard the feedback you're looking at about the board members.
Okay, I'm not done talking. I'm still addressing the issue with the superintendent, guys, is that when I spoke to you and asked like how much is the district office, you said and told me, and I heard twenty million, then I responded saying that, then what about the solar glass? It won't hit budget with that. And you said, well, you know, you, you can go up. So that's what I heard from you telling me.
Yes, and you also called DLR, DRL, and, and, uh, I think I've had a track record for being able to say the same thing consistently. I've been saying thirty. If you took twenty at some point, that was you taking twenty. It would not be the first time that you have ever changed something.
Um, regardless of what I changed when you kissed me off, which I know what I've heard, so you can't tell me what I heard or didn't hear. And I'm not gonna tell you what you heard and what you said. It's just that we're gonna disagree. The point is that you're gonna point fingers. That's fine, you know, that's unprofessional, but I'm just telling you what you told me. And if you disagree, it's okay. But you can't tell me I was wrong because what I've heard and what I remember. I actually have a brain that I can use and I've been following you, okay? You're not straight. You're not, okay? So I know exactly what I've heard. You know, when I hear numbers, it sticks, especially these big numbers, okay? And what you told me long, long before, I also remember, okay? I, I, I know I'm a new board member. That doesn't give you the right to withhold and this lead and this direct information.
But since open the account is in the twenty-four bond for administrative expenses.
I'm sorry?
You said when you hear a number, it sticks. What's the total amount for administrative expenses in the twenty-twenty-four bond? Because I said it six times earlier.
A hundred and eighteen, no?
No, a hundred and twelve.
Okay, that's close enough.
No, but just like twenty is not close enough, the third.
You know what? If you saw me around that number, it's like that's very disrespectful because then I can do the same thing to you and test you out publicly and humiliate you. You think that was a nice thing to do?
I would just, yeah, I would just like to go back to the question that's on the table is what type of survey would we like to see? Or we wanted a community forum? I just want us to be super clear, so our, our staff has clear direction. So that way, come January, we're not saying that we're not, we're not pleased with the outreach that was done. So I just wanna be crystal clear and concrete with the motion and the recommendation for what type of outreach do we, would we like to see? Um, I think that's gonna be very important for us to move past January and get this done. Uh, so board member, uh, Ortega Romero, do you have an idea what type of survey or form that you would like to see so our staff has a clear direction?
I don't think that's too much pressure on the spot. I think we need another session to discuss that. I mean, how are we, as board members, understand the gravity of surveys and what to ask without input, you know, from each other and our superintendent and everyone else?
Alternative is to just let Miguel answer for himself, too.
Did you, yeah, I mean, thank you for the question. I, you know, when I was superintendent, envision, envisioning, I would really like to see, um, something about accessibility, um, and, and I talked about personal experience. I went to Alboya, I'm the South Port of the District and just, you know, it wouldn't be very easy for hyping me to get to, um, the, the, the new district office locations. I would just like to see, um, you know, would parents be, is, is this a, is it a, is it a location, um, where they were taking advantage of the community center? Um, you know, that's really my biggest concern. However, you know, we could add, um, you know, questions regarding, um, obviously, uh, it's sixty-five million dollars. It's a lot of money. Um, do, do they approve it? And, and I know that this goes on the, the bonds, but, um, you know, I think it would just be a really good pressure for community members, specifically parents, and, and I want to voice to students as well. Um, so they're able to get their input on how accessible is it and if it's a good investment. Um, because additionally, like, there's gonna be a time where we're no longer here, but students are still gonna be benefiting from, um, whatever type of investments we make today, tomorrow, whenever it is. So, um, that would be just like one question that I would recommend. However, if we're adverse to a future agenda and, you know, board members to comment with, uh, you know, suggestions on what type of questions, uh, would go right for a survey, um, you know, to miss on the point. This is the first time I, you know, see a survey, so I'm not sure what the precedent is in the past, um, you know, that, that, like, will be not from surveys in the past, uh, would be appropriate, is what I would like to.
I mean, I would suggest that we do another study session to go over the surveys as a group, as a board, and to come up with a, a consensus. That way we can all brainstorm. Again, just being on the spot is really hard and what Miguel just, he really, um, you know, just repeated and, um, uh, supported my statement is that this can't just be done right here in the moment, but we do need to, uh, re-gather and to go through survey.
Well, I'll just add that again, we have professionals that work for this district that have been in the field for decades and I'm sure they know how to run surveys and community forums. And my concern is with asking some of the questions that, uh, my colleague, Mr. Ortega Romero, shared without participants having all the data. All the presentation is knowledge to make an adequate decision. You're gonna get, you know, you're gonna get something, uh, you're, you're gonna have a lot of errors there. And it's not gonna be adequate. So what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, we make a motion this evening and let the staff share ideas for a community forum, which might be a bit more applicable to getting feedback from the community that, that, if they have questions, we can answer in full time, so on and so forth.
I think we can do both. Uh, I think we do a study, uh, you know, a study session where we can work with the district office with their input and their survey as well as, uh, board members. Uh, again, this is something that some of the board members want to participate in and that we should be able to do so, uh, you know, based on the feedbacks that we got today. I know that some of us don't, but some of us do and that we need to, you know, motion this so that we can vote on it to see that that would be the case. You know, let the majority rule, but, you know, we said our piece and what we were looking for and, and to participate into this. I mean, what Miguel mentioned, I completely support. Um, you know, it's just, you know, something that he feels very strongly about as I and that we can all collaborate. This is ultimately the board's decision. And if we want the district involved, absolutely. That was never a deterrent, that was never excluded. It's just that the board needs to be part of this and that's what Miguel and I and Luna are asking for.
Yeah, and I, I, it sounds like the, the ask is for the community to be involved, for community feedback. That's why we're delaying this process, potentially increasing costs and delaying timelines for future services to the students. Is, is, is because we want community. And all I'm saying, that's great. In fact, in fact, I would, I would implore all of us post-January to consider creating a community engagement strategy. Thomas and twenty thirty, what does that look like? But my point is, we had weeks to request this and not one board member said. We should have, not one board member said, not one board member said, "We oughta have a survey for this district office. We oughta have a community forum." And so, and so, and so, I guess what I'm saying is, what, what, what I'm saying is, the, the, the fact that I didn't know is not an adequate excuse for not.
It is, it is, because we weren't informed of what we.
I, I will say, I will say this. I've never been, you know, we all have tires of cell phone number and email. When we reach out to him and ask him a question, you should fix up the phone and that will call you back or he'll email you to answer. We've never been denied, I've never been denied, I'm not sure if the other board members, but I, I don't think so. No board members have been denied access to the professionals that do the day in, day out of the district. So I just feel like, this is fine, but we should have asked.
You may not have that experience. You may not have.
Good governments.
Other board.
Good governments is asking questions in advance and giving feedback in advance. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so the statute doesn't require us to be in advance, not one hundred percent.
I'm not saying statute, I'm just saying, good, good governance is, they have the means.
Good governance is meeting space. Well, the point is that, you know, there's two motions now. Let's just address the first one.
Well, let's get the motions going, but, but also being a new board member is not an excuse for not being able to hold yourself accountable and make leadership decisions. Being you is not an excuse, right? This isn't a training round, it's not a training. The day, the day, the first day that you're elected, you're gonna duty to be able to make decisions and do research and ask questions.
I've done my part.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying you.
Well, you know, that clapping, you know, that just, that background. Well, you know, that's not like this.
Being you is no longer an excuse for being inadequate with board governance.
I think for us not to call this earlier doesn't make us inadequate and I take that as a personal offense. Because being a veteran of, you know, you guys should know better than to belittle the other board members with such comments saying that that's no excuse. So I, you know, make my statement that is extremely, extremely hurtful to say and that what I've done for this, this district, you know, within less than a year, I don't think is unmatched. And for you to sit there saying that this is, you know, you know, not allowed, you know, that putting us down. No, 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 but it's not off topic when we're being insulted, to be insulted that we are, that being a new board members that we have no excuse and we should know better and that you guys can, you know, just run the muck and then we have to like dabble in it. Not, no. So for us not to know, for us not to know, for us not to know what you're doing.
Hold on, question.
It is, it is, uh, it is a direct fault of us because we just no support.
Um, so we'll take the voters and I just wanna say that, you know, community input, fine. We've had, all the stakeholders that are gonna be utilizing this facility to some aspect have had input. Um, and that's basically what we're kinda kicking the can for. Um, but we'll go ahead and call a vote. Uh, motion on the table currently is to approve the GMP. Um, are you ready to listen? Alright, um, I'm voting yes, uh, to approve the GMP. Uh, Ms. Ortega Romero?
Of staying.
Uh, member Luna here?
No.
Member Sime?
No.
Alright, uh, voting two-two-one, motion does not carry. Well, Luna's not making it because it was made during, it's a statement. So if you wanna make your motion again, uh, Ms. Ortega Romero can.
Yeah, my, my motion would be to, uh, table the, um, GMP for now, um, until late January and then, um, you know, send out a survey for parents and students. So those that wish to participate would give their input on, uh, this decision. And, uh, we could do results, um, you know, in January when, when available, hopefully in January. I would like your motion.
I'm, I'm sorry, there's already a motion on the table with Miguel's. The thing is that, can I hear? Oh, she's, my mistake. Um, I, I just have some questions on your motion, Miguel.
Yeah.
So when you say the timeline to be late January and to, or is there any, like, um, uh, you know, a special meeting? A work study to go over the surveys, potentially layout with, with, uh, input from the district and collaborating on that? And then to send that out and have that timeline by end of January? Because I'm looking more like, um, you know, mid-February.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd open to, um, I, I would really use the discretion of the president, um, to call for a special session for, um, a work study, uh, but I think that, uh, having.
Well, the special session.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The question written down and approved by the board would be appropriate, uh, to send out to families.
So Miguel, you do know that to call for a special session, you also need three votes as well, uh, not just the board president. But I suggest that we do a work study on the survey and to have that timeline within a six-week period so that we can get the maximum participation that would bring us to mid-February. Are you willing to change your motion to adjust that and to vote on that?
I wouldn't make a motion like that extensive. I would just, if you're gonna do it, uh, Ms. Ortega Romero, I just have a motion to table and request a survey and then we can figure out the timeline.
Yeah, I, I would stick to that just because, um, I don't wanna hold anyone accountable for any detailed timeline. Uh, but I think that, you know, giving families an appropriate amount of time, considering the holiday time, um, is, should be taken into consideration.
I agree. I think that if we could, um, just make the motion simple just to, um, table this so that we can circle back with the work studies. No, no, that's fine. I just wanna clarify for the public, it's important for the public to hear everything that we're saying and to reiterate and to make it clear.
Any additional comments on this session?
So the motion is to bring back the, the, the January and survey community of the three-year block and resource center.
So, uh, Ms. Ortega Romero, your, your survey is the whole district office project, just to clarify for the notes.
Yes, uh, we can do the whole district office and then you can take off at the January and just for any time next year. Just so we, we don't stay, um, you know, we don't set a specific deadline, especially if there's little participation in the survey.
Sorry, any, uh, conversation on the floor? Uh, everyone again? Alright, um, member Luna here?
Yes, my vote is yes.
Member Ortega Romero?
Yes.
Member Sime?
Yes.
Number number seven?
Nope.
I would know as well. Uh, motion carries three to two. Uh, that, make it with me, uh, ask for a motion, no, I'll make a motion to adjourn on the second. On the second, alright, um, all numbers in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Any numbers opposing? Motion carries five, oh, thank you all, have a good night.
Good night.